Good evening, everyone. Hi, I'm Bruce Sues, Chair of the Abington Planning Board. I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone from this public hearing on the proposed land use, zoning and land use changes at the South Wamif Naval Air Station. Before we get started, I'd like to let you know how I will conduct this meeting. This meeting is for the residents of Abington. If you are here from another community, welcome. If you are here from Wamif, you had an opportunity to provide your opinion to your counselors. If you are here from Rockland, you will have an opportunity to provide your opinion to your planning board in Rockland. If you're here from Abington and would like to speak, please come up to the podium, give us your name and address, and then you can ask your question. The Southfield Redevelopment Authority is also here. This is a joint meeting. And I'd like to recognize Tom Edusa, SRA Chair.
Anderson.
Anderson, I'm sorry. And if you care to introduce yourselves?
Mr. Chairman, Tom Anderson, Chairman of the Southfield Redevelopment Authority. And we'll go over to the Abington representative by Roger Woods.
All right. Well, I've got to read the official.
Do you want to introduce?
David Rubin.
Christopher Allen.
Alder.
Monica Horry.
Kelly Friday.
We have Kid Young, Land Planning, Land Use Administrator, and Pat Fitzgerald, who takes our minutes. Thank you.
I recognize some of you guys. When I worked for Old Colony Planning Council, I served on some boards at Southfield. It's nice to see some of you guys.
Thanks.
Great. Okay, I'm going to read the Town of Abington Planning Board. Notice of a Joint Public Hearing of the Planning Board of the Town of Abington and the Southfield Redevelopment Authority pursuant to the provisions of Master General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, the Enabling Legislation, Chapter 291, Acts of 2014, and the Abington Zoning Bylaw and Map as amended, hereby called for 6:00 p.m., Monday, September 18, 2023, Abington Town Hall, 500 Clonawitts Way, Abington, Mass. To hear requests for an amendment to and restatement of the zoning and land use bylaws and map for NAS South Wamif and an amendment to the Abington zoning bylaws and map. Article 1, Amendment to and Restatement of the Zoning and Land Use Bylaws for South Wamif Naval Air Station. Synopsis of Proposed Land Use Changes. Amend and restate the zoning and land use bylaws for NAS South Wamif, including, without limitation, creation and adoption of a new mixed-use development district, M U D D, set forth in Article 7A, therefore. Article 2, Amendment to and Restatement of the zoning map for South Wamif Naval Air Station. Synopsis of Proposed Map Changes. Create one new mixed-use development district, M U D D, to govern the remaining developable area of the base and eliminate any remaining zoning districts where development has not occurred. Create one consolidated open space, O S D, district in lieu of multiple open districts, open space districts. Article 3, Amendment to the Abington zoning bylaws and maps. Synopsis of Proposed Bylaw and Map Changes. Amend existing 175.3 of the zoning bylaw and add a footnote to the zoning map in each case to clarify that any land located within Abington is also located within the boundaries of the former Naval South Wamif Naval Air Station, shall be governed by the relevant Southfield Redevelopment Authority documentation, including the zoning and use bylaws and map for South Wamif Naval Air Station. The entire above described changes to the zoning and land use bylaws and map for South Wamif Naval Air Station and the Abington zoning bylaw and map are available for viewing at the offices of the Town Clerk, 500 Clonawitts Way, Abington, Mass, during normal business hours, 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., Monday through Thursday, and 8:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m., Friday. Chairman of the Abington Planning Board, Bruce Sues, and the Southfield Redevelopment Authority. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Just, if you need to open up all the hearings. Do you want me to do that after you open yours? How do you help me to see?
I'll wait till Mrs. Shay stops calling.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to open the public hearing right now? Motion. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're open.
Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open.
Do the motion do a second?
Second.
Send me all those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes, ayes. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, turn it over to you.
All right.
Do you want to turn it over to?
Yes. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to you folks for your presentation.
I'd like to start by, again, it's the Southfield Redevelopment Authority working with the New England Development, Brookfield team is the assigned master developer, and John Chueg will be presenting the information tonight. I turn it over to John at this point.
Good evening. For the record, my name is John Chueg with New England Development. As you mentioned, Ms. Chairman, this is a joint meeting between Southfield Redevelopment Authority and the Abington Planning Board. We had the opportunity to meet with you informally, so we're not going to repeat a lot of the information that we presented that night, per se, about our background and the like. I think that's there. But we would like to review how we ended up with the zoning. Obviously, tonight's focus is on zoning and the zoning bylaw that's before you. But we're going to touch on a few other things to sort of show you how we developed the plan that we have and how we're moving forward. A little bit, not to kind of talk too much about who we are, but New England Development, Brookfield Properties, this is a joint venture. We're the appointed master developers that replaced L-Star. As I said, my name is John Chueg. Robert Pierce from Brookfield is sitting in the audience. Tony Green, who's with us, and Paul Sincauda, who's sitting behind my right. We also have some of our other consultants and planners available if there are particular questions, specifically from Tetra Tech, we have Jason Helendron tonight, who's also here. And the other person you'll probably hear from tonight is Tim Sullivan, who's our zoning council, because obviously that's the focus. So that's a little bit about our team. Two minutes on New England Development, and we did go through that. But for those who are listening, may not be familiar with us. We're a Boston-based company. We've been in business for over 40 years. We are chaired by our, founded by our current chairman, Steve Karp. We've developed probably about 50 million square feet of space here in New England primarily, but also down to West Palm Beach. The last 20 years, we were originally known as a regional shopping center company. We developed a lot of regional shopping centers throughout New England. About 20 years ago, we went into doing mixed-use projects of all kinds, some that you may know that we talk about up in Westwood at University Station, which is Long 128 is one of our projects. Pine Hills down in Plymouth is one of our projects. In Cambridge, you went to Cambridge today, seeing all the lab buildings that are going up along the canal. Cambridge Side is one of the projects originally done as retail that we morphed into housing and into lab and office space. Those are the types of projects that we do. Just to give a little bit of background, we're very excited about this opportunity because we feel that it's very rare that you find the opportunity to find 1,400 acres 14 miles out of Boston. This project has had a somewhat difficult past. It has failed four times, and we've been really trying to spend the last period of time to figure that out and to be sure that doesn't happen again and that we can bring a project forward that actually benefits Wamif, Abington, and Rockland. So that's a little bit about us. What we want to cover tonight, it's not all these things, but just sort of touch on some of them. And again, zoning is going to be the major piece, which is what you see there in the middle. But what have we been doing since site selection? It does matter because it shows you how we developed our plan. A little bit about timeline, just so you know how this all fits in. A little bit about master plan vision, because from that vision, we developed the zoning. And we're going to touch very, very briefly on technical studies. We've submitted and is here in Town Hall about 2,000 pages of documents that deal with stormwater and traffic and fiscal studies and the like. Those are actually all here, but I'm not going to touch on those tonight because, again, we're focused on zoning, but they are related to zoning. A little bit about an open space-driven master plan, because it relates, again, to how we developed the zoning, and a little bit of what we see as the benefits of moving forward with this proposal as it is presented. So since site selection, we have been selected a few years ago by the SRA in a competitive process that they had. There are probably four things that we spent most of our time on. Again, zoning being the one we're going to focus on tonight, but a little bit of land ownership, a redevelopment plan, our coordination with the Navy, and then the zoning. And again, zoning being tonight's focus. Why does that matter? Because it does answer the question about how we were able to put this site back together, which is really the land ownership issue. We affectionately call this the Humpty Dumpty Plan because of all the colors and the owners. When we originally got involved in this project a couple of years ago, the only thing that was controlled was the Washington Capitol land, what you see there in yellow. The Navy controlled what was still in purple. Southfield Redevelopment Authority controlled what was in green. But L-Star, the former failed developer, controlled pretty much everything in Abington, a lot of what's in Rockland, and virtually all the streets and all the infrastructure. And then on the top right, you see the U.S. Coast Guard, which was land that was subject to a public auction, which we worked with the Southfield Redevelopment Authority. They now own and control that land. But the reason I show you this, until the end of last year, we weren't able to do anything because the only thing we could tell you that we could control was that which was in yellow. And controlling yellow, for example, doesn't everything that's in this sort of light pink color that's got all the habitat and most of the open space. So not controlling that dictated that we really couldn't go forward with the project. What we did was work with the Southfield Redevelopment Authority, and by eminent domain, they actually took all the land in light purple, which allowed them to suddenly control infrastructure that are up in the existing development, most of the habitat, the bulk of the land in Abington. So that's why that was a, I stop on that piece just because it was a really important thing to get to the place where we could actually do the zoning. Humpty Dumpty Plan's on the left. What's on the right? The difference is now through our agreements with the Navy, Washington Capitol, the SRA, we have a right to acquire and control everything that you see in light blue. And that's what makes this a totally different plan and something that we could actually bring the zoning forward to the communities. A little bit about timeline. This year, January, March, we spent a lot of time with the SRA in March especially, getting the redevelopment plan approved, getting a zoning bylaw approved, preparing those technical studies that I mentioned that are here on file with the town. April and June was really through Wamif. Wamif Planning Board and council did approve unanimously the zoning that is before you. Also, working with natural heritage, which is a big part of the open space, which I'm going to talk to you about in a minute. July and September, really this timeframe has been town meeting preparations, all moving to an Abington town meeting on October 14th, also one in Rockland on November 7th. That's really, just puts it all in context for what we've been doing. The other thing to understand, how the zoning got built, is to understand what the land is. I'm just going to touch on this very briefly. But this is really what this land was, pre-1940, pre-World War II. Huckleberry Hill down at the bottom, farmland, streams throughout it. That's what this was pre-1940. Military base, 1940s. They cleared about 900 acres of the base. Base is about 1,400 acres. Big hunk of Abington, as you look down in the bottom left, and just so you can get a sense, and I always forget to remind people about where we're at, this is Abington right down in here. Rockland is here, and then the balance of this is Wamif. The total site in Abington's about 179 acres, just to give you a sense of what it is. But this is what was done, disturbed, paved, flattened. They took Huckleberry Hill down, all to create World War II effort, ultimately becoming the Navy base and a base for the originals. What you have out there today is really what's in the top, I'll call it, left, that's up here in Wamif. That was developed, much of the base that you just saw, including much of what you see in Abington with the taxiways and the runways and like, that all stayed, and that's still there today. The big area that's up in Wamif with the turnaround, that's all still there. But the development is really what's right here, which is about 1,274 homes. That's where we find ourselves today with the base. So how does that relate to the zoning and sort of what our big idea is and how the zoning got written? Well, it's really this idea of bringing runways to greenways. It's the idea of taking and disorientation, again, up in Wamif where the hangar is, runways, runways, runways. When you look at those, could you turn those into green areas? Could you actually build commercial and residential developments off of those areas? Connect what was once the northern open space and the southern open space? That's sort of the idea, and that's why in the zoning, for example, there's one large perimeter wrapped around open space that goes for the entire base. So zoning. I'm going to ask Tim Sullivan to come up and talk about the zoning. And the zoning is, and I don't want to steal Tim's thunder, but much of the zoning that was in place, especially for people who owned and controlled and had bought property there, we left alone. And he'll show you that. But we were trying to think, and that's why I kind of gave you that little bit of introduction, how do you take the idea of connecting these open spaces, rebuilding the base, creating a zoning that works for that which hasn't been developed? Leave what's there, because people bought mortgage property, did all that, but try to create something that works, respectful of what's there, but also gives some flexibility. Tim will talk about it, but when you have 32 different overlay districts, I mean, it's more overlay and more districts than they have in the entire town of Abington. It really, when we got involved in this a couple of years ago, the biggest thing we heard is we don't understand the zoning, we don't know how it works, we don't know how to read it, and we don't know how to do it. So that was one of the big impetuses of figuring out a way to kind of create this perimeter open space, but also create a zoning that would work and that people could understand, which is why we created an overlay district called 7A, which Tim will tell you about. So that's out. I'd like to turn it over to Tim.
Thanks, Joe. Tim Sullivan, Goldston Stores. So, you know, John mentioned a bit of the background, and we were here informally a little while ago, but, and I'll repeat some of that, but also go in a bit more detail. So, Paul, I'm controlling this, right? Yeah. So John talked a little bit about the planning vision. He also talked a little bit about how the SRA adopted a redevelopment plan, which is a planning document. And so the zoning's really sort of that next step of implementing that planning vision. And there's two parts to it, a proposed zoning map and a proposed zoning text. So I'm going to talk about those in that order. So with respect to the zoning map, there's really three things in the proposed zoning map. So where development has occurred, the zoning is staying the same as it is today, and that's in Wamif. But holistically looking at this, so zoning stays the same where development has occurred. Provisions of the zoning stay the same there. Delineate one open space district across the perimeter of the site. So there's one open space district consistent with that planning vision that the SRA put forward of having a green buffer. And then for the area that's yet to be developed at the site, creating one zoning district, the mixed-use development district. And so those are really the three things that they amended and new map to. The second piece of that is the zoning text. Largely, again, it's a way to implement the redevelopment plan, but largely that text is staying the same. The general provisions and authority, other than updating and conforming things, are staying the same. The rules of the road for the folks who have developed property and own property, that's all staying the same. The big change to the zoning is to adopt a new Article 7A, which governs that new mixed-use development district. So that's an overview of each. Let's talk about the map first. So on the left is the zoning map as it stands today. As John mentioned, there's more districts in the base than there are in Abington in there in its entirety. It's terribly confusing. It's inconsistent with the existing planning that's been adopted. It has multiple overlays. It has multiple underlying district, multiple residential and open space and commercial districts. It was really designed to be very specific as to location and use for a plan that never came to fruition, and therefore, it just, it never really worked. The zoning on the right is what's being proposed. The green district is the open space district on the perimeter of the site. On the top half in Wamif, the multiple colors, those are the existing zoning districts as they stand today, where property has been developed. Is there a pointer? I don't have pointers on here. So these districts here are the ones for where property's been developed. This is the green open space. And then this area in here is the mixed-use development district on area that has yet to be developed in the base. So that's the zoning map, the proposed zoning map on the right. So with respect to the zoning text, again, the change here really is to implement a new mixed-use development district, Article 7A. It's one place to look for the rules of the road for developing what's left at the base. The previous zoning had multiple places and multiple parts to look to. It's really important you have one place for this area to look to for the area that's left. It encourages a mix of uses. That's part of the design of the district. And it's supported by, and perhaps most importantly with this zoning, the zoning's supported by a tremendous amount of materials. So it has a master development plan, which contains things like existing conditions plans. It has examples of amenities and open spaces and streetscapes and general architectures to be incorporated into the development. It shows a core development area where development would begin, and it's supported by technical reports, so stormwater, utilities, traffic, fiscal. All of those reports are part of and support the zoning to create a baseline for the approval process going forward, which I'll talk about in a minute. But that's the important part. The zoning has a baseline of all these materials to go with it. This is the master development plan at this scale. I'll just touch on a couple of things. You can see the open space district, so it's delineating the open space district here. It's delineating the areas of the mixed-use development district. The brown is where development has occurred. You see the open spaces within and in the yellow area, which is the core development area where development would likely start. Some of the other provisions, as you'd expect, again, because this is one place to look for everything, so it deals with uses, allowed uses, residential, commercial, industrial, recreational, all, as we'll talk about in a minute, subject to an approval process, design review, conformance review, or project development review through the SRA. It has prohibited uses, junkyards, landfills, cannabis, fuel storage, hazardous waste storage, all of that is prohibited. It deals with affordable housing. As people may know, 40B is not allowed in the base. The actual, the enabling legislation has a specific requirement for affordable housing of 10%. So that's carried forward in the mixed-use development district and also remains in the underlying districts that stay the same, and currently, the base is getting compliant with that. And signage, signage is dealt with by a comprehensive signage package through design review. So I spoke a minute ago about the master development plan. The provisions of the mixed-use development district also have design and performance standards. So in addition to being consistent with all the baseline studies and reports and architecture and streetscapes and all that, there's also a whole series of performance standards. There's pages of them in the zoning, but I put the headings here, so building design, utilities, street design, circulation, public safety, stormwater, all of the standards you would expect to be in a district like this or here. And the approval process is something I would like to spend some time on because it isn't, we didn't talk about it at the last meeting, and I think it's important for a number of reasons, perhaps most of which is because it's much more comprehensive and thorough than anything that's been on the base to date. So this is a hypothetical representative example of how you'd go through the process if you had a 200 resident project, 200 residences as a project. So if that were the case, there'd be really likely two filings. There'd certainly be one, likely a subdivision plan to create the lot, but also a project development review, so a PDR review. So I just want to sort of walk through the steps that would apply there. As is now and will be going forward, the SRA is the zoning authority, but the first step is to get a design review certificate pursuant to a declaration. So before even being able to start an approval process, if a project like this were to go forward, there'd be a design review certificate that would be required under a declaration to make sure that the design, the location, the fit of the overall development, this vision that we've been talking about, is compliant. Once the project obtained a design review certificate, then it can apply to the SRA. And in order to apply to the SRA for a project development review, there would have to be materials in support of the application, stormwater, traffic, fiscal, utilities, the like, that demonstrate that that project is consistent with all of the master development materials and also compliant with the mixed-use development district.
Tim, I'm sorry, could you interrupt for one quick second?
Of course.
Which steps happen at the town level and which steps happen with the authority?
So the town level is actually the last level, which I'll get to. So right now, the SRA is the zoning authority. It will be going forward as well. The first step here doesn't exist, which is to have a declaration, a comprehensive declaration on the site that deals with having something as a unified whole, right? So the first step before you can apply under our proposed zoning is to get a design review certificate that is signed off on, so that when the SRA gets the application, they know it's consistent with the master developer's designs.
Signed off on by?
The master developer. So pursuant to a declaration. Once they have that, then they can go in and apply to the SRA. And that would be an application that says, here's my 200 resident project, residences project, and it complies with the master development material, the design and streetscape and amenities and open space. It has, the traffic is within, the traffic that's submitted and on file, the utilities, the stormwater, all of that. And that gets submitted to the SRA. The SRA will review that through the process. They would issue then an approval after being satisfied that the standards have been met.
Or not.
Or not, or, right, or ask for more information. The normal approval process as a planning board or zoning board would do. They, assuming that that development gets the approval, then the land use administrator of the SRA, the zoning enforcement officer, would then issue a zoning compliance certificate. And then that would say to the town, in this case, Abington, this project is compliant with the zoning. And then that development would have to go into the town and apply for a building permit.
So if I may, Tim?
Sure.
This kind of gets into one of the things that I wanted to ask about.
Sure.
We have a conformance determination process?
Yeah.
Different than the?
PDR.
PDR?
Yeah, why do we do that?
Yeah, so how does that conformance?
Yeah.
Come into play here?
Yeah. So they're effectively the same thing. It's the timing. So the way we drafted this zoning, we weren't sure if a piece of the project would be ready to go through the PDR process at the time of the zoning, the rezoning. So it's just if it were to happen at the same time as zoning, it allows for that to occur, but effectively, they're the exact same process. There is no piece right now that's going through the SRA for approval as part of this town meeting. It was to allow for that if that should occur, because back when we were drafting this, we didn't know if that would be the case.
So if the proposal were to come out prior to?
Town meeting, yeah. Or simultaneous with, but there isn't one right now.
Okay. So just to be clear, there's no role for this board in any of these projects?
Well, there isn't a formal role in the PDR process. Right now, there's no role for an Abington board in an approval process, or Wamif or Rockland either. But there's a number of things, I would say. Number one, the materials and the baseline that are being set by this town meeting is much more protective of all of the towns than has ever been the case. Because at the time the zoning's approved, all of those studies, the stormwater, the transportation, are the baseline by which the SRA will be judging those applications going forward. And of course, the recommendation of the town, of the planning board to the town meeting is part of that process. And also, the town, maybe not the planning board per se, but the town will be very involved in the building permit review process, the certificate of occupancy, all of the review to be sure that it's constructed appropriately. And practically, any development going forward would meet with the town departments and be very involved in that process, but there isn't a formal special permit or something that the planning board would be issuing, no. So the only other piece maybe that I haven't talked about now is that the subdivision, as is today, that would also be approved by the SRA and recorded at the same time that the project went forward for building permit. So John, I'm going to pass it back to John. He'll talk a bit about some of the traffic, or excuse me, the technical studies and supporting documents that are part of the zoning. Unless there are any other questions on the process before I pass up.
Tim sort of gave you the view through zoning. As I mentioned, there are a lot of materials that have been submitted. What are we focused on really? Water? Water. And I'm just going to touch on this, we could spend the evening, if you want to talk about any one of these, especially water. The base is significantly challenged in that there's a lack of communities having adequate water or sewer to service them. There are two main water sources that are available, one being the MWRA, which the Waymouth and the Southfield Redevelopment Authority are co-applicants to seek MWRA water to service the base. That is a process that's currently underway. MWRA has water, they have an extra 100 million gallons, but it's actually up in the Blue Hills. It's not down in this region. So part of this is how do you bring water down into this region? The second opportunity, and these are both opportunities that were studied, were actually required to study them by the state, is Brockton and the Aquaria, Alternative Aquaria, is a desolization plant down at Dyton. Brockton has access to that water. And the idea of running a pipe from the end of the Brockton system, closest point is actually at Peaceful Meadows on Route 18, straight up 18 to service water for the base. So those are two of the water alternatives. Sewer alternatives, each community has sewer issues as far as capacity, INI, system improvements, those are still open for investigation. Stormwater, you have on file about a 400-page stormwater report about how we can make the system better than it is and also reduce peak rate runoff, which we feel, the base really does need to be redeveloped and stormwater is one of the issues. This is a system that was put in in the 40s, two 48-inch pipes, that long-term, there will be significant issues with respect to that. So that's part of stormwater. Transportation, we've studied 72 different intersections. We're proposing improvements at 30 intersections. And then finally fiscal, and I'm going to actually talk a little bit about fiscal because I think it's important and it does much relate to zoning and potential development. But we actually unusually had the opportunity to study something. When you do a project, you usually don't have something that exists to say, well, what would happen if this was built in, you know, parts of this were built in Abington, built in Rockland, so we will study that. One thing I should say about all of these things, and it's probably the biggest differentiator between any of these proposals that you have seen, we are not looking at this on an incremental basis. We are not looking at it as, gee, if we got a little bit more water, we could build some more houses, or we could build a commercial development. Every one of these topics, and certainly in our state filing, local filing, our goal is how do you solve it, assuming a full buildout in all three communities? So when we look at water, we look at the total water solution. When we look at transportation, we look at the total transportation solution. There is no way financially to make this work unless you solve all of these problems because of the significant dollars that have been spent and were defaulted on and what it costs to bring. I mean, to give you a sense, to run an MWRA water line from the Blue Hills is about $80 million. Aquaria plant, although less money, is about $40 million to run that pipe from a 36-inch pipe that sits at Peaceful Meadows and comes up here. So these are significant issues. You have to solve it, you have to solve it for the entire base. So that's a little bit about the technical studies that are in front of you. I mentioned our fiscal analysis. We hired RKG. RKG is primarily a municipal governmental reviewer, works heavily for states. They're nationally known, they're very good. We ran into them when we did our project in Westwood, they were representing the town of Westwood. We asked them to do a full analysis of Waymouth today, as well as Abington and Rockland and Waymouth in the future. There are 1,274 homes that are right now in Waymouth, there are 67 schoolchildren. We asked them to look at what full build would look like, we asked them to look at revenue and costs, we asked them to look at if we were to build something in Abington, what are the educational costs, what general government costs, police, fire, and all that. Mr.?
The 1,274 and 67 schoolchildren was included in the RKG report from May of '22?
Yes.
So presumably those numbers have risen since then, number of units or?
Number of units, the only thing that's been under construction at the base are some single-family homes, which at that time, I think about half of them were open, so there might be another 10 or 12 homes. But there hasn't been. But what we asked the RKG folks to do was do us an analysis of that which exists there today, because what's the best indicator of what the future is going to be? That which already exists, if it exists in the same place. So we had them look at the homes and we said, well, what's there and what does it mean for Waymouth? And I know Waymouth is not Abington, but it is an indicator of, in this place, what does it mean? Total assessed value, about $400 million, gross taxes about 5.3, got almost a million dollars in costs. And we put into that school kids, police, fire, general, town costs, city costs. There's some bond payments that Waymouth had committed to, but the net annual revenue to Waymouth is about $3.2 million every year, based on the project that exists today. And the reason that matters, I'm in Abington, why does that matter to me? Well, we then looked at it and said, well, what would it mean if you actually did it in Abington? And we said, in Abington, what's the current tax rate? What are things assessed for? How does it look? What if it was mostly commercial development that comes in Abington? Because Abington has an initial sort of node that makes a lot of sense for commercial development, given where it is off the Parkway. What if it was more residential? And we asked them to do an analysis of, look at all the costs, what are the costs in Abington for police, fire, what are the incremental costs if we built something in Abington? The only thing we changed in developing what the net positive tax revenues would be in Abington is we said, don't assume the base implications as it relates to school kids. Assume Abington. What is Abington's experience? The base experience is 67 children for 1,274 homes. We said, look at what Abington's percentage is, which is higher. We said, put that cost in. So we're all this, you know, we think the experience will be very much the same it was in Waymouth because the product will be at the base, but we said, and how people live today, but we asked them to do that. So we're trying to come up with, and their estimate of Abington at full buildout was between $4 and $5 million for annual tax revenues on a net basis.
I do have a couple more questions about that, but I also don't want to ruin your flow, so.
Okay.
If that's okay?
That's fine, whatever you want. I will absolutely go back to that. The last thing I just want to focus on a little bit, you know, we call this the open space-driven master plan, because it does very much relate to the zoning. When you look at, and I'm giving you the conclusion before I'm showing you what we're talking about. When we're done, in the plan that we're showing, about two-thirds of the site's going to be open space or restricted, about 885 acres. Restricted area total will be more acres than are restricted today, primarily dealing with habitat, about 519 acres. And we're going to create or restore about 100 acres of grassland. There was a golf course proposal, which I'm going to show you in a minute, which eliminated. If you go out there today, you're going to see all these debris piles, including piled up in Abington, piled up in Rockland. State wants those all removed, they should have been removed, they never should have been there. So that's part of our proposal. Making all of the space contiguous, I'm going to show it to you on a map in a minute because it does relate to the open space and the zoning, protecting more habitat, making areas available for recreation for Abington residents. Let me show you a little bit about the plan. Tim showed you this, this is the redevelopment plan, so what's in orange is really what's been completed, and then the rest of it is sort of the undeveloped area, but we're bringing it all in open space. Okay, then you move to the zoning plan, which is the colored zoning where people have bought, built, sort of have that, the hat spaces is the mixed-use overlay zone. And as you move forward, there is today a 2009 restriction on this land, and that's through the state. It's a conservation management plan. And when you look at it, it's pretty much, this is Abington right here, and this is Rockland. This is where the golf course was supposed to be. In 2017, those of you who were involved may remember that that line got changed slightly and was moved down. But in typical, unfortunately, L-Star fashion, they never finished any of the paperwork, they defaulted on the escrow permit. Virtually all of the state permits are in default right now. But right now, that's what's allowed. One of the things that we've been talking about with the state is knowing that line, could we amend that line and actually make more of a restricted line, include all this land, everything down here, and restrict all of this so that instead of being about 430 acres of restricted land, it's 516 acres of restricted land, and make it all contiguous? Because we have the second-largest habitat of Eastern Box Turtles, and the idea is to build a grassland area down in through here for additional habitat. So when you build this plan, and as it relates to the zoning, you end up with this plan. Two-thirds of the site being open space, as I said, about 885 acres, the no golf course, contiguous habitat, public trails. The area for development in Abington is this area here, is an area in Rockland, the bulk of the area obviously is in Waymouth.
So which one is this?
That one looks like the zoning plan, or the redevelopment plan, it's one or the other.
It's zoning. It's dated May?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the one we're voting on.
But that had more open space on it?
It does in more restricted space, because you can't conflate the zoning as to what the zoning says you can do in a zone. But then there's the recognition of the fact that much of this land, virtually, everything that's down here is turtle habitat.
Okay.
And it's going to be grassland. And the problem with the site now, in dealing with natural heritage, is they would say to you, much of the open space that we have here is very poor quality. Much of the grassland space we have here is very poor quality. The debris piles, which are full of everything, I'm not sure what is, everything that's out there. I won't get into the birds and the bees, but how birds are treated in habitat, they want wide-open spaces, they're afraid of predators up in the area, you need wide-open spaces. Those debris piles have to be removed. Not only are they unsightly, not only are they full with things that nobody really wants to have any relationship with, but it also creates very poor habitat. What this area does is create great habitat for people, the ability to be able to walk and recreate, but also for turtles and for certain bird species that are out here. That's what I changed.
Why not just zone that as open space versus the building?
Well, a couple of things. One, we don't know, we haven't finished with natural heritage, because natural heritage, you can't actually issue an amended permit until the zoning's all done and we've gone through MEPA, so exactly where that line is. And right now, where the line is, it's right there, it's up here. And virtually most of Rockland and most of Abington is undeveloped. That's actually where, if you go back, that's where the line is. That's where the line is. So that's what we're dealing with when we talk about what's developable. Now, what we heard is that people, and in 2017, supported the idea of having some development in Abington, and that's what this is.
One more question, we'll run the subject to maps. I've got one here from March of 2023, central redevelopment area. Been wondering, that is probably included the 2017 change, where it probably has some patching on it?
Yeah, pull please.
So that's an exhibit to the zoning that identifies the central redevelopment area, the perimeter area, and the designated commercial zones. Those are three districts that are identified in the legislation. It's the same, they're the same boundaries as they are today.
Yeah. Yeah. Again, the zoning created the open space idea, connecting those two areas. That's how we ended up taking it through, and that's where we would sort of end up from an open space plan. I'll just conclude a couple of things. Moving forward in a positive way on this, clearly, SRA concluded, Waymouth did too, it stabilizes the base community. You have a very difficult community out there right now. There's all kinds of things that go on out in that area and out on the base that are not. And I joked about when we last met in formerly Brazilian kite-flying days, they have, I never knew it before, but riding mower days, where they have riding mower races. We have a lot of security issues out there right now, they're not insignificant. And so some of the activities have been going out of there. We've actually, over the past several months, tried to improve security out there, tried to give additional control. Regardless of what happens to the base, wide-open, heavily paved, unsupervised space of hundreds and hundreds of acres, including land that's in Abington, it's just not a good long-term solution for this, and it just isn't. I've talked a little bit, some of the deficiencies with the L-Star foreclosure, I mentioned it very briefly. They virtually defaulted on every state and local permit. The escrow account that deals with the turtles and all the habitat, the payments, they were all defaulted on, and that's sort of, same thing for the local and state permits. The infrastructure challenges, this project doesn't go forward, including even if you support the zoning, unless we can solve the water and sewer issues. I mean, those issues have got to be solved. And right now, they're not. There are opportunities for us, but they have to be solved. Reconnecting the open space and the permanent buffers, as I think we've shown you probably more than you wanted to see in some of the plans. Flexibility in the zoning, that's true. And people have mentioned that to us. The former redevelopment plan anticipated, I'm going to build 183 units of this, I'm going to build 193 units of this, my commercial's going to be exactly here, this type of residential is going to be exactly here. We will not do that. Recipe for absolute failure, let's fail four times. It's going to fail again if you do it that way. Because there's no way to be able to determine where those things are going to be, what the tenant mix is going to be over a project that takes 15 years to build out, when you have to commit to the kind of dollars that have to be committed to be able to do the infrastructure. And then we do believe that there's certainly positive fiscal benefits for Abington if we go forward with the project. So a little bit about what's next, and we'll go back to obviously any and all questions that you may have. Zoning approval in Waymouth, as I mentioned, was in the end of June, we're talking about Abington, we're working on October and November. We're continuing to work with natural heritage on habitat and the open space proposals, continuing to work with the MWRA and Aquaria on water primarily. MasDOT, we have a meeting with MasDOT next week to go over a lot of the issues that are associated with the transportation improvements. Our goal is to hopefully have final approvals in 2024. In 2024, we have to work with the state. The legislation, all has to be changed. Legislation refers to L-Star, specific plans. If you saw their prior model, they had 20-story buildings, they had man-made lakes, we used to call it the Dubai Plan. Interesting, not realistic, nothing that would ever be built anywhere in this part of the world, but all of that is actually referred to in the legislation, so we have to amend that. We think the plans that we're considering, I mean, we grew up here, we live here, we develop here, I don't know what people want and what can be developed, so that's sort of our sense. So that's sort of our next steps as we move forward. So, and we would be remiss if we didn't ask, we hope you will favorably recommend the zoning to proceed to town meeting. But with that said, happy to open it up for discussion and answer any questions you may have. As I said, some members of our team are here, so I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Do you board members have any questions, any follow-up questions?
Lots, and some of them are kind of pedantic, but I don't know if, better to go to us or to the residents first? People aren't as far.
Are there any Abington residents who would like to ask questions? Please come up to the podium and give your name and address that you can ask your question.
I'm also a member of Abbotan Conservation. So local boards won't have any input on any of this project? Some of my concerns, just looking at the overall, I mean, it's nice that they want to connect the Greenway and everything, but in order to do that, there's some wetlands here, and there's a connecting from a vernal pool on the northern part of Abington, on the Waymouth line, all the way down to the Southern Point near Spruce Street. I mean, how, what are the plans for that property as far as the certified vernal pools go and the stream? I think the stream was going to be culverted. Can somebody give some information on that? You shaking your head? No, I have to answer that. I'm sorry? Have to answer that. That's my question.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, sorry?
Yes, please. A couple of things. As it is set up today, each community has representatives, they're actually here tonight on the SRA, Representative Abington, Representative Waymouth, represent the community that's there, representative organized labor, I mean, different groups that are there. They are by legislation, the permit granting authority for the base. That is not any different than it was really since the creation, would not be any different going forward. The base is not, is federal property, it is still controlled in many ways by the Navy. I didn't talk about our relationship with the Navy, but we've been negotiating with the Navy over the past year or so to keep the monies that are due the Navy on the base and to actually deal with treatment on the base, and to deal with PFAS on the base, because what was this? Naval Air Station, what did they use? They used foam. What does foam have in it? PFAS. So it's really not a creature of Abington, Rockland, or Waymouth, it's a creature of the federal government. So there's legislation that was created, that created the Southfield Redevelopment Authority, vested in the Southfield Redevelopment Authority, the ability to grant permits and approvals. So I'll give you an example right now, and the wetlands- So, I'll give you an example right now, in the wetlands world. All of the wetlands lines are being updated by VHB through a grant that actually in the SRA initiated them, and the vernal pools and everything else is being updated. So there will be some updated filings that are associated with the wetlands on the base. I can tell you they have not changed greatly because of how the base was created, it's extraordinarily flat, but that is such that the SRA acts as the Conservation Commission, they actually issue the approvals associated with that, so it would actually not be. As far as the area that's, we're not culverting streams, that's actually not part of it, part of this, we have a stormwater report that is out there, we are going to probably be installing some of the basins up in Waymouth, and to be able to control the flow and rebuilding some of the existing piping that is there that has failed over time, which is what I meant by the sort of commentary about the future, if we don't do something at the base with respect to stormwater. I think the area that you're referring to, if I can get back to the plan, down in the south, if that was the area, and sort of, if you want to, sure, please, please do.
Because it's hard to see from that.
Absolutely.
And this is my map, so.
Okay, all right.
This is what I'm looking at, this is Abington, this is the Waymouth line, this is the Rockland line.
Yeah.
It's Abington. We have a certified vernal pool here, we have a disturbed area that was reported by DEP as far as the wetlands being destroyed in that area, and here, the wetlands here, and here's the other vernal pool here, and here's this perennial stream.
I'm going to guess, without having a map up there, a lot of that is the Tacon in through here, which was the area that was created by the Navy, and we're not actually disturbing the Tacon. And a lot of the stormwater comes down into that. The basins that we're going to add, there's probably going to be one up in through here, there's another one up through here.
Okay, but here where you say the runways are, is where it's going to be developed, but you also, I can't remember.
What do you mean, in this area? There are some areas in here, vernal pool and wetland right around in that area, is that, I can't tell if that's exactly where.
No, no, it's the Abington park here, it's like the map in New Hampshire.
Yeah.
And you can't really, you can't see it on there because you don't have a delineation between Abington and Rockland. You just have the Waymouth one.
There is one.
There is.
Right there, that's Abington, right there. That's Abington, right there, see it?
Okay, so the yellow indicates what you want to develop?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's exactly right here, and here's the vernal pool here.
But that doesn't mean it would impact the vernal pool.
How so?
Well, just like any other vernal pool, any other situation we'd be dealing with the SRA.
Yep.
They would act as a conservation commission, just like we were coming in front of the Conservation Commission in Abington.
Okay.
And that would be identified, and that's what I meant by, they just finished the mapping on a new wetland study to identify everything and to update it, so all of the restrictive areas and things that we would have.
So, all the delineations, like a new ANRAD, so to speak, wouldn't have been done, and that's flagging's all current now?
Flagging's all current now, and they're going to be filing ANRAD of all of that, of all of the base, actually, not just the part that's in Abington. And that was done by VHB, and Mr. Henderson can speak to it because that was a product of the SRA.
Okay, there was another thing I wanted to say. So, this perennial stream that goes from the wetland here, which is the vernal pool up here, and it comes all the way down into here, is, I'm having a hard time trying to place, I wish there was an overlay that we could see this.
Yeah, no, we don't have an overlay, but COMCOM, but again, I think it's a very basic principle, to the extent there are buffer areas, vernal pools.
Right.
Same rules apply.
Okay.
COMCOM rules are not any different than what how the SRA administers or how your board would administer, exact same thing.
We're going to hold by the same standards and laws as a conservation commission as the three communities.
Where this is federal property, and if you're going to be filling or removing or just changing this for developmental reasons, if you, so you still have limited projects, rules, and everything else if it's over 5,000 square feet?
By the same laws, if you need to.
Okay, and this is all federally, and it just, DEP, Mas, have anything input on this? No, you're shaking your head.
Yes, DEP does have input on this.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
It's controlled by both agencies.
Okay.
But I guess the basic thing, not having the overlay up there, is the SRA rules and regulations, their bylaw, what you have to follow, what the restrictions are, what the buffers are, how you treat the vernal pools is absolutely no different than if it was in front of Abington.
So on the SRA, who is the representative for the portion of Abington, or is it just?
That fell right there, Roger Woods.
Roger!
How are you?
Very good, very good. So I guess my question would go to him then.
Okay.
So as far as.
Ask me in front of him so I can have.
So as far as the conservation, I mean, the issues that I brought up, I would like to know your input on that and what your response would be.
Okay, once I see the plan that they've put together, then we'll talk.
Because myself personally, I mean, you're asking for the zoning to be changed, or before, it's kind of like putting the cock before the horse here, I think.
But I think one thing some people worry about is, the SRA's will be the board overseeing what several boards do in Abington.
Yep.
And several boards in Rockland or Waymouth do.
Uh-huh.
It doesn't mean that they're going to be in the bulldozers wetlands, and then people are going to be allowed to do things that they wouldn't normally be able to do.
Right.
So, the zoning, this part of the zoning that needs to be approved.
Yep.
By the three pounds of drain that's already approved is the next step. They're putting out their money now ahead of time to do the flagging and those type of things, which was the tour that you were just talking about. All of that will be, will come public once it's done.
I guess my, I'm having a hard time understanding why we'd want to go in for changing the zoning before the national heritage and, you know, endangered species, people have gotten back with their report as far as how they feel about this. Because looking at it on MassMapper, this whole entire area outlined in yellow is all priority habitat, so that's my concern.
Thanks for that.
Sure.
Interesting, natural heritage didn't protect 62 acres of the turtle habitat. They didn't protect most of the grasslands that were there. What they didn't like about the plan that is out there now is it's not contiguous like this plan is, and believe it or not, turtles do not go on a straight line, and it's, they've actually moved and we've been monitoring them. What's out there now, if this gives you a level of comfort, is we're taking the risk moving forward with the zoning and where we're at and determining wetlands, that we will be able to address with natural heritage, the purple line that you see up there. Otherwise, nothing will be built in that purple line at all, and there's very little land developable neither in Abington or Rockland. So that's actually, it's not, it's not the cock before the horse, we're actually going forward because what MEPA wants to see, so you can then go and apply for those state permits, because remember, you can't get those state permits without MEPA being completed, so they want to see that the local community say, okay, there is a zoning, so therefore, if we were to proceed forward, there would be an opportunity for you to be able to do something. That's sort of the process. So it's actually not cock before the horse, it's actually the risk factor falls on us to try to go forward, knowing that the decision might be made not to allow any changes to the 2009 conservation permit, which is really what we're talking about.
Any other questions from Abington residents? Sir, let the gentleman in the green shirt go.
Mike Fray, 726 Washington Street. I've been involved, more or less, with this project since God knows when. At one point, it was going to be a golf course, and then it was going, at one point, it was going to be a sewage treatment plant, but they all got flushed down the toilet. And now, we're looking, with L-Star, they had basically the same mixed use. I was on the board of selectmen and in front of the town. I guess the question I'd have to you gentlemen, and it was a very nice presentation, who's going to be responsible for the snow plowing, the police, the fire, and the schoolchildren? And let me just finish by, in regards to the school committee, having served a number of years on the school committee, it can be very, very expensive to transport these kids. Right now, my grandchildren, I follow the buses, and I'm truly amazed at how much they scoop down these streets, and then they'll scoop into the Woodsdale School, they make a drop off, and they go. With L-Star, we ended up saying, there's no access besides, we got to go into Waymouth. There was talk about perhaps on Route 58, down by Coal Tower, making an access, but you got to go all the way over. I truly think that those things should be done before we go allowing somebody to change the zoning, which town meeting changed it to industrial thing. Somebody said the cock before the horse, I do agree with that. If we leave it the same now, we can always change it later. Once we buy into this, we're done. We're done. And I think in the end of the thing, it might look like a, you know, a nice thing, but it's going to end up hurting our town. The other thing is too, you're never going to convince me that we're going to consider that part of Abington. It's going to be the airbase of Abington, or, you know, one like the others. Really, you know, I assume that most of the mixed use is going to be apartments, and, you know, we see what's happening now, they're filling those apartments up as quick as they can build them over there, so. I would hope that the board would take a step back, take a good hard look at this, and maybe we can crunch the numbers a little bit better, a little bit finer, but especially with the transportation and the education of the kids, last thing we want to do is build another school. And I can tell you right now, having been on the school building committee, our capacity on the elementary, in the ECC, and even the high school, the high school, a lot of students came back, and it's pretty well at capacity right now, so. I just would suggest that we delay converting it into mixed use and look at it a little further. Thank you. But I would like to add answered publicly that who is going to be responsible for the snow plowing, the police, the fire, and the education of the kids? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fray.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, through you. One of the reasons that, years ago, we didn't used to do fiscal studies and fiscal reports, that people always asked the question, well, what's the impact on police, what's the impact on fire, and what does that mean for our community? So one of the things that we did as part of the RKJ report was to study what are those impacts, and what is the net tax benefit that has the opportunity for the community? Because you have to figure everything from, if people live in my community, they have a right to go to my library, they have a right to, you know, the cost of them to vote, how many calls am I going to have, how many schoolkids am I going to have, what's going to cost me on a per pupil basis if I have to educate kids? We did look at all that for Abington, Rockland, and Waymouth. We looked at the experience that was over at the base that exists there today, and what does that all mean? And the numbers that we saw, and I won't get in front of the planning board, the details on the report, were to try to look at net numbers after those costs. And we did look at all those costs. Now, roadways, the intention certainly that these would be private roadways, private internal roadways, so that's not, I mean, those would be maintained by, you know, one thing that's quite amazing here is of all the stuff that's already been built, there's not a single declaration of restrictions and master declaration for this entire base, it doesn't exist. It's like the Wild, Wild West. Every community's got its own little filing, it's got its own sort of assessment mechanism. Part of our structure that Tim went through is to actually put a master declaration on the base, so how these things, how roadways get kept up, people pay into a fund, how those things get done, will be for the entire base, so it'll be addressed. The roadways, our expectations, they would say, private for police and fire, those are included, and what our net costs are and our analysis. And the other thing for Abington to realize is on a developable basis, when I said, you know, all of Abington was about 179 acres, that sort of cross area there, what you can actually develop when we're all done, what you're seeing in the yellow, is probably not 70 acres total. It's just not a big land area that's available for development. We think it is very important because the base is looked at as a place. One of the things, and it was sort of implied by one of the earlier comments, you know, why doesn't this convert to, well, Abington will do its piece, and Rockland will do what it wants to do? Because this is federal, this is a federal base, it was part of the BRAC system, that's how it's controlled, it's subject to a separate piece of legislation. We don't particularly care for some of the provisions that are in the legislation, including the things like, you have 90 days to go to each community and seek zoning and try to move it forward, and they all have to be, you know, consistent. We're not crazy about the way it was set up, but it is the process that's been set up for now, now a decade, so that is what we're going forward with.
So the authorities plowing the roads and maintaining them, so these are private?
We think what we will build is we'll put a master declaration on the entire, you know, undeveloped piece. As we develop, then, costs, assessments will be part of that master declaration to maintain the roadways, the infrastructure that's there. There's no system right now, the way it stands, for infrastructure and maintenance, or they're all little areas in which they have got different groups, and that's never going to work when you have a neighborhood and another neighborhood and they all look different. It was amazing to us when we saw it, that no one ever put a master declaration, I mean, you do a project that are these kinds of planned communities, both commercial and residential, you have assessments based on your type of use and like, none of that exists there today, so that's what we'll put in.
So, assessments charged by the redevelopment authority?
It can be charged by the redevelopment authority or the master developer, because they will stay for, in the beginning, the way these usually work, the master developer stays as the declarant.
Yeah.
Most of the funds are being paid for by the declarant as the properties are built out, more and more people enter into them, there's annual assessments, and then the money's used long-term to maintain roadways, to fix broken pump stations.
Is there currently a sunset date on the authority?
There is not, Mr. Henderson could speak to it, I think the intention is at full buildout, the intention would be that the redevelopment authority would sunset, but also, there's also significant bonds that are on this project now, about $50, $60 million that are owed, so, you know, those all have to be dealt with. But part of how those monies get paid is actually the base to get developed so the monies can be paid down and the funds can be returned to, for building out some of the infrastructure.
But police and fire come from the respective towns where the call is?
Mm-hmm. Just in the same way, the way the legislation was, department heads, building departments, issue, inspect, issue certificates of occupancy, there was a desire apparently at the time that, you know, the communities be involved, collect the fees, and I deal with that, they collect the tax money, I mean, that's how that was structured. Remember, years ago, this was all one big pod, and all, I mean, all of that is gone, so it became, communities would get the dollars, would get the fees, but would have some responsibilities.
In the portion that's been developed already, Waymouth, so how police, fire, plowing roads, that's all handled by Waymouth now?
It's all Waymouth, yeah, water's there, sewer's there, it's all done by Waymouth.
Any other questions from the audience, sir?
When I was here for the open space meeting, I said I was confused.
Sir, could you get your name and address, please?
Dan Bromman, 222 Linwood Street in Abington. My wife and I have a website, v- waitney.com, we shine a light on people who are preserving the earth, protecting the environment. When I came here, I was really confused because I'm seeing maps that show a lot of open space and conservation land, but then I'm seeing a map that shows a multi-use development district that's right smack dab in the middle of where this conservation land is supposed to be. The reason I'm here today is because of this. This is the most fantastic, one-of-a-kind, unique open spaces that exist anywhere near here, anywhere near here. And this is right smack dab in the middle of that multi-use development district. I think it's really important to preserve these areas because with the climate crisis that's happening right now, the children are going to depend on fresh air and clean water, and that's what these kind of places give us. Now, I wish I could believe that all that area is going to be conservation, but if we do, like Mr. Fray says, accept this and vote it in as a zoning change, Articles 2, 3, and 4, I think it is, we're going to give away everything, and we have no say in anything. As a matter of fact, I think it's Article 4 that says, we give up governance of this land. we give up governance of this land. That's how it's worded, governance of this land. So that means that the SRA has complete authority over this land. I can't accept that. And I will vote against these three articles, and I'm going to encourage everyone that I know to vote against these three articles. Because we really got to take care of our earth, and I can't, I'm sorry, but I can't trust developers. They said at the open space meeting, we can change our plan anytime, but we can't change the zoning. So, you know, I just plead with the people of Abington not to give up their right, their sovereign right to protect and preserve their land. Thank you.
Chris, can I follow up about the open space land? Is this open space zoning, or is it conservation restrictions? How is this working in terms of the land use?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry with you. Can I respond to the prior speaker?
Yes, please.
Because the land that was referenced and is shown in that picture is down here in Rockland. It's not in Abington. Two. If natural heritage was standing here right now, what they would say is that very low habitat value. The reason they would say that's very low habitat value, and Paul, I don't know if you can go to a picture that shows the runways, not as greenways, but sort of runways as, I don't know if we have anything that could be.
Sue.
Okay. I'm going to go off microphone. The area is showing us down here, Rockland. There's a lot of habitat, and to give my back to those folks who were there. But there are repiles that start here in Abington, that go down here, that go down here, that wrap around here. They would tell you that's all earned for habitat. Because grass and birds and like landfill or predators that were sitting in there. But what they want us to do is to create all of that area as underdaked as a grass and habitat. We don't, Mr. Rowland spoke, we don't disagree with them, the importance of open space, the importance of habitat. It is an amenity for people who live there and who may live there in the future. It's an amenity for the communities, for people who want to go there. But those areas have got to be transformed because they have been dumped upon. There are all kinds of materials out there that have to be addressed. So that's the area he's talking about, right down there, down in Rockland. It is going to be protected going forward. It is part of, part of this land will be, there are two concepts. There's going to be an open space zone, which sort of rings the entire base. And then we're going to overlay onto that, and Paul, I'd like you to maybe go to the purple plan, a conservation restriction. There's one there now, and that's the one that's in right there. So there's a conservation restriction right now, from 2007, so it sits there. And that was where the golf course was going to be. We felt that was very poor conservation restriction. If you think about a golf course, we actually developed those plans. There's 30 acres of pathways, of parking lots, of clubhouse, and a privatized space. That's what they showed as part of that. We're not going to have any of that. Our open space will truly be, in this case, a conservation land. Conservation land is here. It's 400-some odd acres. We're going to overlay all, starting about here, all of this, all contiguous, wrap it up through Rockland, and make that all open space, underlying piece of it, conservation of that, okay, 560 acres on restricted habitat. Because right now, there are areas that are non-restricted that are available for development, where turtles live, and where we had habitat. Because one thing of spending 20 years monitoring the turtles, we actually know where they are. They're all in telemetry, and they're not in some of the areas that the state has restrictions, and that restrictions held, are in fact, they don't have restrictions where they should have restrictions. The other thing, if I think if the state were here now and say, we want this all to be contiguous. Having pieces, because, and I joked about it, nobody appreciated it, I think it's funny, turtles don't go in straight lines. They don't stay, well, your line is here. You can't go to the right of this line. That's actually not what they do. That's not what birds do either. So that's why making this whole area, starting all the way up here, making that all contiguous, and making that a combination of, there'll be underlying open space, and then there'll be conservation restriction through a CMP with natural heritage on top of that.
Okay. That more explains it, because going through the use table, there are uses allowed by right in the open space district, but those are generally recreational type activities. But there could be a for-profit enterprise in the open space district, hypothetically.
Well, in the open space district, this is one of the challenges. And we've discussed this with open space committee here in Abington. We had them on a site walk the other night. You know, we had the wonderful Monday night pouring rains, and I tell you, your open space committee was out there. It spent a couple hours with us in the rain. When you come up with a big idea, if you thought it was a big idea, of wrapping the entire base in perimeter open space, you know, so you wrap the whole thing, you still, you know, you may have to run an underground utility out to the roadway. Because it's great if you wrap it all in, but the realities are going to get to the rest of the world, too. But, so that's why some of that language is there. And a lot of that language has existed. Tim would tell you if he came up, you know, for a long time, it exists in the zoning today.
Yeah, it's things like just, you know, outdoor, commercial, recreation, light, outdoor, commercial, recreation, general, public recreation, open space. Some of that's just tennis courts and basketball courts. But, you know, it could also be a driving range, and it could be, you know, by the sounds of it, it could be like a more advanced type gathering space for a driving range type facility.
You're talking about a Topgolf now, so.
Look, you're talking about net heights and other things. So I started to put companies together. But I mean, it's, but some of those are for-profit entities. So it's not just, you know, passive recreation. It could also be part of the commercial.
And I have to tell you, one of the things that we heard.
Nothing to impose from, just to make sure I understand.
But you should notice, Paul, one of the things that we heard from people is the idea of having more fields, more space. You know, don't do anything in your plan that's going to keep you from being able to do that. Now, there's a different view of opinion perhaps on that. But most of the people we talked to, because we surveyed people, we talked to people, said, what are you looking for? A lot of people in Abington, Rockland, Waymouth said, one of the things we don't have is a lot of that type of space, and we need more of it. So we want to be sure, don't foreclose the opportunity. I mean, that was purposeful. I mean, because that's what people told us. They want it.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
John, if you could, just to clarify one thing, are we not changing the authority of the SRA as far as planning, zoning, conservation, in any of the, any of this current zoning change? Everything remains the same as identified in the legislation and the current zoning protocol, correct?
Absolutely. Because again, this was a creature of legislation. It's a federal base. I'll be very candid with you. One of the questions that we got in Waymouth was by a city councilor. Why doesn't Waymouth just take, Waymouth and Abington have Abington, and Rockland have Rockland? And one of the issues that came, well, one, I think the private landowners might object to that. Two, the Navy's going to object to that. Three, that comes with it about $60 million worth of debt that are going to be assessed to the three communities. I don't think that's, you need someone, and it's not, in this case, public entities don't do this kind of work. You need a planned community here for all three communities, where you look at it on a master basis, and you provide the infrastructure to be able to develop commercial and residential uses. That's the only way this base works. And I did mean it when I said it before. One of the reasons it's failed so many times, besides some fraud on the last developer, we're not going to go there, was that people didn't focus on this as 1,440 acres have got to be solved for. They focused on it as, I can get a little bit more water out of Waymouth, so I'm going to build a little bit more. That's absolutely worst thing you can do with this place. And that's why we've not approached it in that way at all. But to answer your question directly, Tom, this is all pursuant to the legislation, same authority. That's why Abington is represented by Mr. Woods in this case. That's why Waymouth has representatives. It was the determination made by the state legislature and working with the federal government and the Navy that this should be developed as a place, not as his Abington, his Rockland.
Any other questions from the panel?
Tom Dion, 27 Mulberry Drive. I'm also a, an Abington Water Commissioner, representing Abington, Rockland Joint Water Works. What piqued my interest when I went through this plan is Section 9, Water Resources Protection Overlay District. And when you get into it, it basically talks about how these overlay districts would be put in place to protect the quality of the water, the aquifers, that would be going to the east or west of the base. And it sounded good, frankly. It sounded very good. However, when you look at it, it says, look at Exhibit B, Water Resource Protection Map. And when you go there, it just says to be included. I'd be interested to see, because from an Abington perspective, we have three wells in Abington that supply water to the community, and we have plans within a couple of years to add a fourth. So that concerns me. And it might not be a big issue, but it is a concern. But what did, and one of my questions was, if you look at that map, I could be wrong, but when we went through this before, I think 90% of it is Waymouth and Rockland. I think Abington had 10%. I'm not sure if that's correct, but, okay. You look at it, and you say, geez, look at it. It's in the southeast. What kind of things could they put in there? Okay? And basically, you know, I think Tim highlighted some on your presentation of things that they couldn't. For example, landfills, automobile graveyards, landfills receiving only wastewater, blah, blah, blah. And if anybody goes through this list, if you haven't, there's 13, and it's good stuff. Good stuff. But the optics of it, when you go to the next section, special permitted use, it basically negates that, that this special permitting authority can issue a special permit overriding any one of those 13. So that concerns me. And I think from a governance viewpoint, my understanding, I don't know how many people would be on this board, or my understanding on the zoning, there's three. There's one from Waymouth, there's one from Rockland, and there's one from Abington. And I'm just, I'm just concerned with that, that the interest of Waymouth and Rockland, who control 90%, when it comes to zoning, you know, might not be to the benefit of Abington. And my understanding, if I understood the presenters, is that there's a special group, the zoning will basically approve anything over there, and then it will come to Abington or Rockland or Waymouth for permitting. And I don't know, it just seems to me that, at that point, you know, it may be all over as far as anything that Abington might be able to do for it. The other thing that I just looked at is, just quickly, I think you had that the Waymouth, when you did your projections, there were 2,500 residents that would yield 67 school-aged children. 1,200 homes approximately would equal to 67. That would be 18 homes for one student. And again, maybe that is the case. But I mean, I just look at Abington, and I look at my neighborhood, and a lot of three, four-family homes, when people sell and others move in, there were children, and it's not usually one. I think that is maybe somewhat underinflated. And I think Mr. Fring, or somebody had the question about how many kids would it add to our system, that sort of thing. That's a concern. The other thing would be just, I guess my last question is, what happens if Abington at a special town meeting doesn't approve this plan? Does that completely shoot things down, or do we go back to the drawing board? I guess I'm not really clear what happens. Are this just Abington and Rockland, I mean, excuse me, Rockland and Waymouth, do they just go ahead and develop the 90% of it? I don't know if anybody's got any answer to that, but I would like to know. Thank you, Mr. Fring.
So I think there were a few things there, Mr. Chairman. So the Water Resources Protection District is not changing. So the provisions that are in the proposed zoning are the same that are there today, and same with the map. We didn't, we didn't change that. With respect to uses, so all the uses go through the process, well, prohibited uses are prohibited, and can't be allowed. And those include the junk yards, the hazardous waste materials, all of those things I listed before. Those aren't allowed. Uses that are allowed, and special permit uses, will go through the PDR process that I walked through before, as well as, if it's a special permit, you'd have to get a special permit as well. The student numbers, I mean, those are, I know John went through them. It's not a zoning issue, but those are the, those are the actual numbers from Waymouth that John had on that, on that slide there. And the way the legislation is set up, we do need all three towns to approve this zoning, and that's what we're looking for. And we're looking for it to be consistent across all three towns.
Well, while you're there, just out of curiosity, I guess I'm not following. So the special permit criteria says for use described in Section 9.5. So go to 9.5. And 9.5 says, any use set forth in Section 9.4A through M, located within the mud, 94A through M, is landfills and junk yards and everything else that we just talked about. So are they, or are they not allowed by going through the special permit process?
So I'd be happy to look at the language, but junk yards, hazardous waste materials, all that stuff is not allowed by special permit?
Okay. Because it says right here, Section 9.4A through M, that it is.
Okay. I can look at it, and if there's a typo error, we can fix that, but that's not the intention. What are this?
9.5C specifically refers to 9.4A through M.
Okay.
And those are all those prohibited uses.
Okay. I'll take a look. But in any event, that's not the intention. So if there's a erroneous reference, then we can clean that up.
Tim?
Yes?
Can you just clarify, is the SRA, the zoning board, the planning board, they cover all permitting, right? And then that zoning board that's going to be down there with a member from each community is just hearing appeals on the land use administrator, right?
Yes.
Okay.
That's right. And one other thing, because it was talked about earlier, the Conservation Commission in Abington, Rockland, and Waymouth, it's a, the Wetlands Protection Act is a state regulatory regime that's implemented. So it's the same requirements across.
Same with subdivision.
Yeah, exactly. Yes.
So following up on the point that Mr. Collins is making, so quite an apparent anomaly in the wording.
Mm-hmm.
You going to take a look at it?
Yes.
If there's something that was unintentional, then it could change?
Yes.
So how will that process work? Do you change it and then go back again?
It's a good question. I think the way, the way we would probably have to handle something like that is probably a specific Abington. I mean, if it's a clerical Scrivener's type error, I think that's, that's one thing, and I think that can be cleaned up pretty straightforwardly. I think if there's something that's more specific to Abington, we'd have to deal with that as a separate thing that Abington would approve.
It's not specific to Abington, really, though, is it?
No, I think this is just a Scrivener's error.
It's Scrivener's, and it gets done by, I think, voted the, or if I read this correctly right. They can, they can change, they can change small typos of Scrivener's errors.
Yeah, that can be cleaned up. Yes, that can be cleaned up administratively. Yeah.
Could I ask a few things, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
First question I'm going to ask for, sorry, I'm sorry.
Well, hey, I think, just regarding the school-aged children, I'm a resident.
Can you, can you get up and use the microphone? All our fans at home are dying to hear everybody.
Sorry. I'm a resident of Southfield, along with being an SRA board member. I can speak to the school children thing from personal experience. Those numbers are very consistent. The 67 has been very consistent. It's grown some with development. It's more or less stopped because there is no development. But it's the nature of the community. It's the nature of the housing. I'm in a small subdivision of 18 homes. There's one school-aged children. One school-aged child that hasn't changed in the six years I've been there. It's the nature of the building, again, the nature of the community. It's been very consistent, and I expect it will not change in any of these communities.
Mr. Collins?
A question for our town council. So I think this is in 1.3 of this, where it refers to that they're reviewing uses for the greatest benefit of the towns. And I'm just wondering, is that a legal term? Is there a way of defining that? Or is that, I'm not, I haven't seen that before. I don't know if there's a way of explaining that, I guess. So 1.3A.
You know, I'd have to, I'd probably defer to Tim on the origin of that language, but... but does that come from the legislation, Tim, perhaps?
This is in the Authority Section 13A.
Yeah, I just don't know if it's, if it's, is that legal language? Is that fiduciary? I don't know, I'm just curious.
I think that's, I can look specifically, but I think that's just carryover language from the legislation.
Okay. Because obviously, when it comes to fiduciary responsibilities, that means something, we have to act in the best interest of the, of the person versus the, the company. So I just want to make sure that we're, there wasn't anything I didn't know, understand about that. If we can go to 21E, this is about administration of the bylaws. I know it's nothing you can do, it's just a personal, probably conflict. I mean, if you're looking to publicize stuff in newspapers of general circulation in the town, I mean, you might as well just go, you know, go to Martin's on a Tuesday and hand out flyers, you're going to reach more people. But the, the one that kind of jumped out at me was, shall be made available for inspection in the offices of the authority, if people want more documents? Are we not posting things on the website if-
We do post on the SRA website.
Okay.
We can send the Abington clerk any fault notices.
There's an all these subject materials apparently on our website.
Okay. So that's the policy going forward. It's not, people aren't going to have to go to the Authority Office to see documents related to that?
They have that work if they wanted to see high copy, the high copy, if you wanted to see like subdivision plan.
Okay.
They have all options, not everyone has access to electronic media.
Right. Okay. As long as the, the general policy is that things like this are posted on the website, and digital copies can be emailed out, and et cetera.
Current practice and people.
Okay. So, 23, we're getting into administration enforcement powers. So if there's a conflict between the local building inspector and the zoning enforcement officer of the Authority, how is that resolved? If the, if the zoning enforcement officer says, "No, this meets" whatever it is, and the building inspector for the community says, "No, this clearly doesn't, I'm not issuing a building permit," how is that resolved? Usually now, it's, you know, internally, there's a meeting, and it gets figured out, but we're talking two parties who are not related to each other, so.
Well, so I think that's a very fact-specific question, so it depends on the facts, but let me try to answer it. The zoning, the job of the zoning administrator under the bylaw is to certify that after the SRA has approved it, the proposed project complies with zoning.
Yeah.
Okay. They take that to the building inspector, just as the zoning enforcement in any town would, evidence to a, a building inspector that this, this complies. The building department will then be reviewing for building code compliance issues. If there's, I mean, I guess it's in the building department's purview to issue the building permit, and if they weren't issued, to issue it, I think they'd have to resolve that through a conversation, or, you know, but they should really only be looking at building code issues at that point, not zoning.
Okay. 24, which is the next part, lots in two or more municipalities. Do we know if there are a lot of those situations?
We don't.
Okay. Just only because there's differences between regulations in the towns, and I just didn't know, again, how those kind of get resolved?
Yeah. I mean, this is sort of a housekeeping thing that needs to be in there, but we don't know that, and that would be dependent on lawning as it's developed.
That's fine. Oh, so, the other big one is, a couple of years ago, we had to go through a fairly lengthy process in creating a stormwater permitting granting authority, and new stormwater permitting rules. Our understanding was that these are required through the EPA, passed down through DEP, and every town has to adopt their own regulations. I don't see any reference to that in here. Are you exempt from that, or how does that work?
Well, so, the SRA, in addition to zoning, currently has the authority and will continue to have the authority to issue regulations. So if that requirement that's being referenced is a federal or state-level requirement that's imposed on municipalities, they'd also have to be required to adopt the regulations.
Okay. I mean, that seems like kind of a, a big one, only because I, we went through a long process to, to get there.
It was required.
Yeah.
Then, then it will be, then, if it hasn't been done already, it will be done by the SRA then.
Yeah. Especially with the amount of work and, and earth moving that you're going to have to be doing, and everything else there. I mean, it's going to be, you know, for, for us, for our town, it kicks in after an acre. Everything you're going to be doing up there is over an acre. So, I mean, yeah, that's why. Rick, did you want to jump in with something? I'm sorry.
Yeah, that was one of the questions that you had asked was performance to the local. And in 7A, I found a couple of references to, 7A, 98, references to DEP stormwater standards, 7A, 1013.
You, that is, I think, one of the performance standards, if that's where we are.
7A, 1013 is drainage calculation, this talks about stormwater being removed from all roof scampes, et cetera, complying with the political, applicable stormwater management standards promulgated by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. So all the references in 7A speak to that, and not at all to our stormwater regulations.
Yeah, so they need the right, yeah. Jumping ahead to open space district, actually, I'm sorry, 45, descriptions of purposes of districts. It talks about New England traditional neighborhood design. What I don't see are any standards. I don't know if these are kind of like guidelines that'll be formulated afterwards. And kind of, there's a lot of design references in here as well, generally speaking. But again, it's nothing that kind of speaks to what they're referring to. So is that something that's to be determined?
So, this provision, including a number of them in this general area, there's a number of requirements that relate to the existing zoning districts, so the yellow, the orange, the purple up top there, including these, where property's already been developed, and we didn't change that. Form-based codes is another thing you'll see in here. Those things are not, those are separate, they apply to the existing districts, and they're not, they're not relevant to, to what we're proposing.
Because I do like the Village Center district as it is, I mean, it's really nice looking, so.
Well, it's standing just as it is where it's been found.
Yeah, I mean, if we can use that more across the whole thing, that'd be amazing. But we do, again, talk about design guidelines going into mixed-use development, subsection I, I guess, on page twenty-four. Again, is there going to be an effort to put together formal guidelines, or is it more, we know it when we see it, in terms of architecture?
Sure.
And, and again, I say this because I love what you guys are, you know, Pine Hills and Westwood, looks fantastic. I want to make sure we're getting that sort of quality here.
It's part of the materials that we filed. We included representative examples of women architecture, what's a commercial building look like, what's a residential building look like, what's a single-family home look like, what's a townhouse look like. We included all of that in the materials that you have on file with the town. Now, I have to tell you, as we do the master declaration, we will do a more developed set of our own internal design guidelines, because we wanted to look, and this is what I was, I mentioned, and I was amazed that there was not a master declaration. But before it even gets to the SRA to look at it from a design perspective, a compliance perspective, we want to be sure it looks and feels like it's supposed to feel. If you look at our projects that we've done, whether it be Westwood or Pine Hills, they do all have a certain look, and they have a certain feel. What we've done, quite honestly, in Nantucket, parts of Newburyport, they all do have a certain feel. And so we will have, but included in your materials are examples of the types of things that we would anticipate. No great surprise, they look a lot, a lot like traditional New England communities, because that's, people from here want to live in places like that.
Because I can point to examples nearby that are what I would not want to see. You know, my friends in Quincy, who I love, and have done a wonderful job with that downtown, I certainly question some of their architectural choices, and I think they'll regret it in a few years. But, you know, what I've seen of your work is like, okay, great, kind of make sure that that's what we're reining towards.
Mm-hmm.
Some of the prohibited uses, this is getting into page twenty-seven, if that's the easiest way. Prohibited include, apparently, gas stations, but also vehicular service establishments. And I have to know, are you banning Dunkin' Donut drive-throughs and Mary Lou's drive-throughs? Because there need, may need to be a conversation about this.
We're not. These are existing provisions, they're separate apart from the mud.
Okay, so this is not the mud, this is the parts that are already developed, and okay, just want to make sure, because we'd have to have a conversation. I assume that applies to the adult entertainment district as well, that's in the existing, and-
Yeah, the, yes.
Right. Again, I do apologize for getting to some of the weeds, but this is frankly our only opportunity to ask these questions.
Understood, sure.
So, again, this is kind of where fences, there's a rule about fences. And it says the maximum height of eight feet. Usually, I've only seen six feet as kind of the standard. I don't know if there's a reason for going to eight feet. Is it because of the type of development, or?
No, I think that's a provision that existed already. I'm not, I'd have to look back, but I, I don't remember having a specific job.
That existing prior to, and I could ask you, but there was also eight-foot fence in different areas on the site prior to some of the zoning change, but probably why.
Prior, okay.
The AP might also do a requirement for building permits as well.
I think that's, yeah.
They may have had to do with density of-
Yeah. Okay. It's, I guess, same thing with the swimming pools, one, are we doing a lot of single-family housing under, in the multi-use, or is that more just from the existing?
The swimming pool provision?
Well, yeah, so I imagine you're not going to have, well, I guess you could have in the multi-unit developments too. It just doesn't say how tall it should be, usually it's specific, I just didn't know if there was any-
Yeah, again, we, we didn't, this wasn't something that we, we modified here, it's the existing.
Please, give me one second. I think, did Jean Matiosas have a question while I'm looking for my next one?
She has to get up there, or can I, no, she has to get up.
She has to get up.
Need to go up.
Jean Matiosas, 32 Nile Street. With regards to eight-foot fences, I thought eight-foot fences were considered spike fences, and they weren't allowed, but that maximum allowed fences allowed in Massachusetts is up to seven foot. Is this different because it's a federal property?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that. That's not, like I said, that's not a provision we changed in here, that's an existing provision. So I'd have, I'd have to get back to you, I don't know offhand.
If you would, if you could, because I believe it is, only because I know someone who's been involved in something very similar, eight-foot, it's considered a spike fence.
So if it's a state law and it's more restrictive, it would apply?
Well, it's not a state law, it's considered, I shouldn't say state law, it's considered a spike fence, eight foot. Seven foot is allowed in the state of Massachusetts, it's changed from six foot to seven foot.
Okay.
But eight foot would, and it could, if you erect an eight-foot fence, it could cause civil action between neighbors and such. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Do you think the answer to that, that some of that was the existing zoning, because it was existing on the site, and that's why there wasn't a change being enacted?
I think the eight-foot, as far as eight-foot counts, as far as if it was applied to commercial property, it was lawful, but it has to be through the building department?
The same as it-
It's during the building, yeah?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry?
I think it was built in its initial zone.
Yes, because it was existing on the site.
So that would be for the existing zone, but not for the new one district?
Correct.
Thank you, thank you.
I'd like that you're taking a, I think, a proactive approach towards parking, and, you know, we don't need to have, you know, parking out the wazoo for every single use, and that you're allowing shared parking and hour parking, and that, that sort of aspect. I didn't see any language about maybe designated spaces for ride-hills, which is becoming increasingly popular, especially it has a younger clientele. Any discussion about that moving forward?
I would expect there would be discussion about that, but that's such a level of detail that it would be reviewed during the PDR process, and something that the SRA would, would likely, you know, be talking about.
All right. So going into the permitted uses?
Sure.
The one use I didn't see, and it exists in two of the three towns, is cannabis-related products, retail, warehousing, manufacturing. Any reason why that wasn't included in, in this as a permitted use?
Yes, the feedback we got was that it wasn't favorable. We, we had it in the draft, and it was, it came out during consultation with SRA Council, with the town of Weymouth, as through the process, it wasn't, it wasn't a use.
So the two towns that do have it probably would feel differently, I'm guessing?
Well, there was also a thought that the towns have it in places that they've already determined, and they, this is not a place that the towns had communicated.
All right. 7A, 42, special permit uses, helipad.
Yeah.
Any special rules about that? I assume you're not going to have it become a frequent thing, but I just, I don't know. I don't know, I know currently that it's allowed, I think, for foster hospitals or some other use. I know there's a lit pad on the site.
There, there is on the site. And that, the idea there, that being a special permit use, subject to restrictions through, through that additional layer of review through the SRA, you know, there's all sorts of requirements related to that. We, we don't have any plans, the reason that's in there is because there's one out there today.
Okay. So, parking loading, this is on page fifty-eight, just talked about no minimum parking setback requirements. Just in regard, regards to general standards, is there any thought about breaking up pavement with landscaping, with, you know, are we talking, we're just going to have some curb-to-curb pavement sometimes? Any thought about how that works?
I think this goes a bit to the conversation John was having before. I mean, there's a number of layers here. This is a technical requirement about required setbacks. All of the master plan materials, all of the open space discussions we've had, there will absolutely be a lot of landscaping here and designed, consistent with, you know, those master development materials have all sorts of streetscape examples, amenity examples, so this is more about sort of blending the hard and fast requirement and those sort of, the master development plan materials.
All right. Next page, signage, it says, "In accordance with a comprehensive signage program developed by the proponent and developed and approved by the Authority." So right now, there currently isn't one, and it will be developed later, and, but we're not sure what will be in it?
Yeah, I mean, so, we, we do this a lot in developments where we have large commercial developments, where you want a look and feel to be consistent, whether it's an institutional campus, or a retail center, or a residential development, or a mixed-use development. And the reality is, you really don't know where those signs will be placed, and how that, you know, will come together until later in the process. So the way we deal with it is the way we've dealt with it here, is to say that a comprehensive plan, comprehensive meaning thought about, you know, across the development, will be developed and worked with through the SRA, and subject to that same process, yeah.
Okay. So, that's in the to-be-done pile, as well as to put those standards together through the, through the Authority?
Well, it's a couple of things. It's to put the package together to, because you don't know where things are going, where would wayfinding go at this point?
But there isn't even a minimum, you know, maximum heights, there isn't maximum materials, there isn't, you know, those sort of details, they're very large macro issues as well, so, but all of it is to be determined later.
In a, in a comprehensive way, with the special permit subject to master developer's design certificate, yes.
All right. Exterior materials, and again, yes, I'm getting pedantic, but, you know, we have to live with this for the next fifty years. So, I'm guessing it means no concrete block, like, we're not talking, you know, brutalist-style Boston City Hall concrete finishing, but we're okay with brick, glass, stone, stucco. Those are the more preferred ones?
So, we're, we're here in the performance standard section, so there's a number, again, just to-
But this is what we do, we do performance standards, so I mean, this is why we have to ask these questions.
No, understood, but this is a bit of a unique zoning, so I just want to make sure that I'm explaining it, you know, comprehensively. So, the master development plan materials that are adopted also have a whole set of examples of architecture with pictures and diagrams and all those sorts of things, which is blended with this. So there's, you know, when someone comes into the SRA to demonstrate compliance on a particular project, they're going to have to walk through the exterior materials as it relates to this standard here, and to the master development materials, uh, master development plan materials.
Yeah. Right. And, but how much of those are guidelines versus hard rules? So, I mean, when you guys get your, the projects before you, and you're reviewing these according to these performance standards, how much leeway do you have to be able to say, "Well, How much leeway do you have to be able to say, "Well, they're proposing, we want, like, we like this, but they're proposing to do this, we really want it, so we're going to waive these performance guidelines." This is kind of the, I don't know how sticky these rules are, I guess.
Look, sorry, can I, man, so, um... This is a lot more instructive on exterior materials and design than the current regime.
Yeah.
That is also administered by the SRA. The idea here is to have examples and, you know, standards by which, over the course of time, the development can proceed and adapt. Because things like, you know, certain materials that are used, I'm not a builder, I'm a zoning lawyer, but, you know, materials that we're using now and that people are very favorable will change over time. And this is a multi-year phase development. So, the idea is to have standards with flexibility, and that will be part of what's reviewed, and there'll be a design narrative that goes into the SRA as part of every aspect of the project. To demonstrate how, as the proponent, you've complied with these standards as well as those standards, and it's going to be up to the SRA to work that through.
Utilities, I'd love that to be placed underground. What's interesting is I've been told before that, well, we can't do everything underground because it's New England, New England can't have underground utilities, freezing, thawing, everything else. But I have a feeling that was just a line of BS. There's no problem putting utilities underground, right? Okay, I mean...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's why, and like I said, I've been told, I'd love to see them all underground, but I've been told, "Oh, we can't do that, it's New England, we have to..." "There's water problems and water tables and..." Yeah, that's what it is, just wanted to make sure, I was understanding. Curb cuts and street, and granite curving versus cave cod berms and all that sort of stuff, that's all part of the design guidelines as well?
Yep.
That are here?
Yep.
Alright. Outdoor lighting, so... If you drive tonight around Stubby Pond in Rockland, and you look northwest-ish, you're going to see a large glow in the sky. Does anybody know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep. And you know what it is? It's the domes at the soccer fields, that's the light shining up and off the domes and up into the sky.
Yeah.
And it just lights up the entire sky.
Light pollution.
Yeah. So, now, full admit, I'm a, often, love the fields up there, I use them often. But, Abington has a dark-skinned bylaw, and I don't know if the other towns do. But, I think that, I would like to see a little bit more strict, I would love to see a stricter version of lighting. Because I think it's pretty invasive what has, what happens over there right now on some dark nights. That, just, it's a, it's fully lit up by the lights bouncing off the tarps, or wherever they are.
So the subdivision rules and regulations govern the lighting currently, and those will be sort of modified in consultation with the SRA as things go forward? So I think that's something that the SRA would take into consideration.
And I just want to chime in, that as part of our MEPA filing, just because, just wrote the section, on sustainability, climate change, environmental impacts, part of that is you can't have any uplighting. Everything has to have color fixtures, that, I mean, there's no way we'd get that through the state if, even if we, you know, not that we would want that.
Yeah.
You know, that, that's not the look that we're, we're certainly going for, but that's also all part of the state filings tonight. Brad, you have a problem?
Yeah, regards to that, I didn't see anything in here about street trees, street plantings, any sort of, is there any philosophy about that? We just did a whole thing about, you know, if you're taking down a certain number of trees, we've got to plant a certain number back. Are there any guidelines we were aiming for with, with that?
I think that's a combination of subdivision and the MEPA stuff.
Yeah, the subdivision rules and regs, all have a section about, I think we have eight different cross-sections, that have got plantings, utilities, green strip, lighting. We use a lot of, for utilities, it's not so much for landscaping, a lot of Waymouth's specifications, because we found them to be the best of the group. And we also found that a lot of what has been put in did not comply with that. So, we change, we change the standards and we do have individual specifications for each type of street.
Yeah.
Which have got street trees and, you know, bushes and plantings and...
Alright.
Cut caliper and all that.
Alright.
But that's where that should live, not necessarily in the zoning, should live in the subdivision.
Yeah. One of the other things that Abington has, and maybe, I guess maybe Waymouth has a better standard, but we also don't allow invasive species to be planted. We prefer actual New England species, any concerns about that?
No, I would imagine that would be something through the SRA as conservation commissioner otherwise that would make its way in.
Yep, like, Norway maples aren't technically native, but they're planted everywhere.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. That's the Wayne Smith immortal question.
The former chair, yes, that would be his question.
I'm almost done, I'm just, I do promise, so, we talked a little bit about the Water Resources Protection Overlay District. And it talks about drainage towards the Ware River Basin, South Shore Coastal Drainage Basin. I think part of it though, that's about where we started, start drifting towards the Taunt River Basin as well?
You're beyond my expertise at this point, but what I can say is, that district is as...
I'm sorry, I missed the question.
Doesn't part of this land start to drift towards the, feed into the Taunt River Basin? I think some of that just forms the headwaters of the Schumetuskacan?
Schumetuskacan.
Schumetuskacan.
That's one, that one.
I think you could be right, I'm really not sure I did enjoy it.
But, but again, this is all, this is all existing.
Okay.
The stormwater management plan is also governed in our master development plan materials, which has a reduction of flows and all that sort of stuff, separate apart.
My understanding is it goes to the North River watershed district, so it heads up to the North River, through the French Stream?
Yeah, the continental divide in Abington is somewhere around there, I'm just not sure exactly where. But I, part of it, I think starts up there. So I guess the...
Leads the base. This is just a hell of a... French Stream leads the base, right at pretty much the Abington-Rockland border. Goes into Abington and then goes back into Rockland, and all flows into Rockland.
Okay.
So, and then the remainder flows in, separate watershed is in Abington, so...
Okay.
What's on the base going to the rock?
So, I mentioned this before, just about the school issue. We talked about, Abington schools use a different formula, I guess. You know, we have a couple significant multifamily developments in town that have been matured and have families. Were those used to figure out the numbers, for instance, like the Gables, the Point over here, they're, you know, they're filled with school kids. So I just don't know how you figured it out for Abington's numbers.
We used all of Abington's numbers.
Yeah.
Which were a factor of almost four, what you experience at the base. But that's the numbers we used to determine the cost factors that would be in the RKG report. Now that all said, and part of this is how we live today, the type of housing that we're going to build, to the extent we're doing residential, we don't have the same number of children. This is not going to be a large, single-family housing development, I mean, it's just not the nature of, of sort of what the demand is. I think you're going to see a lot of similar, to the extent we do housing, similar type of housing that exists there today, which will be more townhomes, what they call a stacked flat condominiums, three, four-story. I mean, that's what you're going to see, you will see some single-family homes, you'll see some attached, you'll see some townhomes. But all of those sort of trend to, and people can accept it or not, but when I would talk about this 10, 15 years ago, people would say, "Well, you're going to put in a subdivision, you're going to have four bedrooms, you're going to have three, four kids in each one of those houses, and that's what it's going to be." And what we have seen certainly over the last several years, is that's a very, very different experience than what it's have as far as the number of children that families are having. The type of households that are put together, which are far less traditional family setups. It's just a different way that we society, from a society standpoint, live. We'll see far more, I think, the results of 1,274 residences and 66 homes than we would see in an Abington. But from a cost perspective, we, we treat it as if we were building four-bedroom, single-family homes, or multis that, you know, in what your experience is in Abington. We did the same thing in Rockland, we used that experience, not the base. We think our numbers are significantly overstated as far as school impacts on your net revenues. But, when we said this years and years ago, Paul Sukada and I did Westwood, we always want to under-promise and over-deliver. Westwood, we promised $7 million worth of net revenues for, on an annual basis for Westwood. We're nearing the end of that project after 10 years, it was $11.5 million last year, I mean, just to give you a sense. And our total schoolchildren on about 450 homes, biggest one, which included actually a high, a higher level of affordability, were about 32, just to give you a sense.
Yeah, I guess that was kind of, the question was... It's hard for us to check the math when we don't know the number of housing units, or the number of bedrooms, or the number of, the style of housing. It's all going to be in flux, it's all going to be moving, we don't know, so... I mean, I assume, it could be your number, could be half the number, could be, maybe it's twice the number, I don't, I don't know, but... On our behalf, when we start to give up the ability to check back in with some of these projects down the road and say, "Huh, this is being built out differently than we expected." We don't have that ability under this plan, which is why I think we need to make sure that the numbers are pretty conservative, and if you say they're conservative, then that's the best we have to go on, so...
Well, and to your best, I mean, it is in the report, and we also did a sort of, call it for lack of a better explanation, sort of a stress test, if it's more commercial or it's more residential. Using the higher numbers of costs, just to kind of give you a sense of, you know, where it might, might skew. I mean, when you look at the base, one of the best places for commercial development is right there. Because of how it relates to the Parkway and coming in, I mean, and that's just sort of the nature of what it is. So it may be, you know, obviously, which would relate to very few schoolchildren. But also the idea of, you know, we have a, have a T-stop sitting up there, you know, is there an opportunity? So, yes, both are allowed, but we tried to account for both in the study. So you could literally flex the numbers and see one more, slightly more advantageous than the other.
Two more questions and I apologize. One is, I think for you, I asked you this question before and I thought you'd give a great answer, and I was hoping you could do it again.
Yeah, I hope I can remember what it was then, that's, at what time is it? No, that's not fair, it's after 8 o'clock, but yes.
Right now, if you look at real estate prices, it seems like it would be beneficial to you to build as much housing as you can. And you're saying that's, I think you said that's not the case, that actually as a developer, master developer, it would actually financially benefit you to build more commercial. Did I misunderstand that, or is that kind of?
No, I mean...
And so could you re-explain why?
Sure, I mean, a little bit. I mean, we're commercial developers, I mean, yes, we've done Pine Hills and we do other things, but we're, you know, we're basic dyed-in-the-wool, all kinds of different, you know, commercial. Last five, six years, I've spent my time building lab buildings, we have one opening in October in Cambridge. You know, very different than what would be here, we work heavily with people who are in pharmaceuticals that do all the COVID vaccines for Moderna, is one of our, is one of our clients. The advantage to that for us is usually less infrastructure. It's something that we, you know, to build one building, both as it relates to our opportunity to be able to finance it, is much better. On a, you know, straight commercial building than building residential, because you think about building residential, yes, there is demand for it, but you're building something without a customer. You know, nobody lives there, so you're hoping that, what your product you're going to do, in the commercial world, slightly different. You're usually, especially in this region, we would be building, for example, for a particular pharmaceutical company who's identified this area, and we know what the lease is going to be, and we can build the building. So from a pure financing, equity, investment, requirement for infrastructure standpoint, commercial, and it's what we do, commercial is easier. However, I would also say to you, there continues to be, and now I'm talking on macro level, Massachusetts, a lot of demand for housing. I mean, if you listen to, regardless of what you may think of our governor and our administration, you know, they would tell you we're 200,000 housing units short in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to be able to deal with it. If you listen to the report this morning, that in Boston, which we do development, we're opening a new building right on the Mass Pike, right where the Stop &amp; Shop used to be, next to New Balance, we're about to open 165 units. And a new Stop &amp; Shop and a new development, they would tell you that this year, we're going to only open in Boston, less, for rental, less than 6,000 units. Which is less than half of what we did two years ago, so we're actually falling behind. So, yes, there is absolute, absolute demand, from a pure development standpoint, I'd much rather do commercial development.
Okay.
And my answer is consistent or not, but...
That's the answer, why it's, you're not looking for 100% residential because it's, doesn't benefit you.
And nor is our MEPA program, I mean, we are, we are programming millions of square feet of commercial space.
Final question, and thank you for indulging me during all this, Tim, I think this is better for you. If Abington and Rockland and Waymouth want to get together and say, "This zoning piece is not working, we want to change it," can we initiate a change to these zoning regs? Or does that have to come through the Southfield Board?
I know there's multiple ways to initiate it, the towns, the executive of the towns can initiate, yep.
Okay, that's almost fine.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Sober, did you have any... Mr. Shep?
Yeah, a couple of quick ones, and I'll try and get through these, these are all within Section 7A. So, we have the list of things that are allowed by right, things that are allowed by special permit, things that are prohibited. And there is language at the end of each one of these sections, it's quite similar. If upon a request by a proponent, and I'm reading from the allowed use or the as-of-right. The authority determines a use to be in the same general use category and is similar in kind to, and is similar in impact to allowed use, a use allowed as-of-right. That use shall be allowed, so that kind of wiggle room on the end of that, that the authority...
Yeah.
Will be able to, so, I guess the first part of this is you have to understand how much wiggle room that presents.
Yeah, maybe to give an example, you know, this is really, you know, oftentimes when you deal with towns, you find that the bylaw doesn't catch up to the world. You know, so, for example, I've got a project where an electric car dealership, you know, wants to go in in a, a small sort of retail space, where there's going to be, or it's an industrial space. There'll be a car in the showroom and a few, three or four overnight, ready for delivery. That's not really a car dealership as this town's bylaw, you know, it's more of a retail showroom, right? And so that's an example of, and the building, the building inspector agrees. That's the kind of thing this is meant to deal with, you know, if something has changed over time and doesn't squarely fit into a definition.
Okay. Tim gave a classic of a Tesla, I did the first Tesla since it came in, and Tesla sells in a room this size. And there's no, they don't change, well, they'll change oil because they don't have any oil. But they don't do automotive repair and the like, but it's a retail store, it's no different, you go in, you sit, you look at a computer and they design it, it's the same. But the years when we start, first start doing that, and when they were putting them into malls and things, they said, "Well, that's not retail, you're putting an automotive dealership." You're really odd, you're putting in a Tesla showroom for a car, where they were going to do... That's, that's where that came in.
That language in the as-of-right section and in the special permit section, give the determination to the authority. The difference is in the prohibited use section. That determination seems to be shared between the zoning enforcement officer in consultation with the authority. So I'm curious as to why in two of those uses, it's the authority, and then the zoning enforcement authority is kind of, all comes into play with the prohibited use.
Yeah, I'd have to look back at my notes on this, but I think the reason we did it this way was because that's the person who's really in charge of enforcing the zoning on a day-to-day basis. So, you know, he or she would be sort of making that determination, saying, "Hey, this use isn't allowed." Now, of course, if it were part of a, an application, the SRA would do it, but I think this is really intended to be as something that's prohibited and someone's operating it somewhere, and the zoning enforcement officer is sort of the first line.
In the earlier presentation, John, you talked, I think there was a bullet point up there about hazardous materials. 78435, unless stored and offered for sale in connection with retail use or incidental to residential or multifamily use. Storage of liquid hazardous materials as defined in General Laws, and/or liquid petroleum products, unless such storage is above ground level, on an impervious surface... on an impervious surface, either in containers. So it goes on to list all of the situations in which that would be allowed. So, this is in the as of right section. And as I'm reading this, it would seem to me that it is allowing for what's defined as liquid hazardous materials to be in that particular area. And to me, either that is, that's an item that would be eligible for a special permit or further consideration of some kind, if not outright prohibited, as opposed to something that's allowed as of right under those circumstances.
Maybe I could take a shot, and then, so, a couple, an easy example of that would be a grocery store. You know, grocery stores or the like may carry, you know, for retail goods purposes, things that would technically qualify as hazardous material, and that's why we have that, that kind of caveat in here. It's a pretty standard provision that we put in for that reason. And I actually do think it goes back to the question that Mr. Collins had raised, I look back at that provision. If and to the extent something like this is allowed, then, then that's the carve-out that was mentioned. It wasn't intended to be that you could store, you know, petroleum all over a 10-acre lot. I mean, this is intended to be for those kinds of carve-outs.
If I go to a convenience store, I can buy, I think, a motor oil, technically hazardous.
Yeah. A residential project, you might have cleaning, cleaning supplies in a custodial closet, that sort of thing. And all those places will have to have plans in place for that, but that's, that's what it's intended to address.
We call, used to call it affectionately the Costco BJ's exception, because, and we, I remember one first time when BJ's went down the Cape, and the Cape has subsequently changed a lot of its regulations. You couldn't, BJ's couldn't sell anything, I mean, there are so many things, you think about what's at a BJ's, what's at a Costco, technically, was liquid hazardous materials. Same thing in the Stop &amp; Shop, but years working with Stop &amp; Shop, because of the aggregation of the number of items up on a shelf, that would all be considered, under state law, in excessive quantity, all liquid hazardous materials. But any one of us would walk into Stop &amp; Shop and say, well, of course, it's right there, it's on the shelf. You have to, if you don't address that, then you can't, you know, technically, we'll sink on all of them.
John, those, those items would go to the local 550.
Yeah, Tom Henderson would not allow them.
And the final thing, 7106 mud regulations, page 7. Following adoption of this Article 7A, the authority shall adopt regulations or associated plans that apply to standards applicable only to the mud with respect to subdivision of the administration's article. And I'm wondering if I could get a few examples of what that is intending to allow.
Yeah. So, under the enabling legislation, the SRA has the authority to do those things, subdivision would be an example. The subdivision, this is one of those balancing things that we have, because you've got existing properties developed under, you know, one way, and you've got the mixed-use development district too. So they have to have the authority to do and lay out subdivision regulations for this area, wetlands regulations, to the extent they need to modify those. It's intended to just basically capture what's in the enabling legislation as it applies to the mud.
Okay. That's it.
Any other questions from the public?
There is.
Yes, please.
I really have more questions than I have answers, obviously. My name is Paula Nicolai. I live at 499 Adams Street, Route 58 in Abington. I've been there now since 1962. I was born and raised in Waymouth, so I have a good perspective of watching, at the age of 78, watching the changes that have occurred. I have some questions about whether our fire police and school heads have had any input or have been asked for any input on the needs that they foresee in a project such as this. I can say, having worked in special education, not even just counting children, it takes one child who is in need and is entitled to be treated and cared for and receive the services they receive. And I've seen programs that cost $150,000 a year, not including transportation. I just need to say that because I think that you can have five children at one rate, and you have one child who has extraordinary needs, and the expense is tremendous, along with translations that we have to do for all of our legal paperwork. It's very, very intensive, and it should be. I'm not, I'm not saying it shouldn't be, it's just intensive and it's expensive. So, I don't know whether any, from your perspective from the planning board, whether you have consulted with any of those department heads to get an understanding of what they perceive as costs for the additional people. I am curious to know about the ratio between homes that will be sold and purchased as opposed to those that will be rented. That is a very important thing for me to understand. As a landlord over the years, my husband and I rehabbed houses, and we certainly saw, and it's, and it's not their fault, we've seen the difference in commitment to a community, and I have also, as a person in Waymouth who's been there forever, in the school system for 57 years, seen the change in the lack of investment, because the parents are moving from place to place, they're transient. And it isn't the same kind of commitment that people have when they live in a town. I ask that question, I'm very curious about that, and if there's any kind of plan for that. The other thing is, is that I have frequented many times visiting friends over at Fairingway at the Naval Air Station, and we talk about parking. Parking is a very interesting situation. They don't have enough parking for the people that they have sold their units to. So as, when I go as a visitor, I would guess that there's probably scattered on the community, and I don't have a figure on this, but just knowing how I've looked for parking spaces, they have no room for visitors. So, when you see a community like this that's compressed, and someone throws a party, and all of a sudden, and I see it on Adams Street, I have 70 cars up and down Adams Street for a big party, what happens to those cars of the visitors? Just a question. The other issue is a question of traffic. I can tell you that on Route 58, you take your life in your hand if you want to cross the street to visit your neighbor. And it's just because of the constant traffic that travels back and forth to the train stations or to whatever. And that's, people are doing what they need to do, but come, come with people, come with traffic. And I think all of those things need to be considered when you are making your plan to move forward, and we need answers. I'm in full agreement that we should have some ability to have answers to those questions. And if we need to have them modified along the way, they need to be modified. Thank you very much, I'm hearing you.
Thank you.
To you, Mr. Chairman, really about four issues. We have met with all the department heads in Abington, also continue to meet with the school department, too. We're very cognizant of sped, also sped, and sped how it relates to reimbursement for special needs children. We don't differentiate between special needs children and children who do not have that, we don't think that's appropriate, children are children, and that's the way we look at it, and that's how we do our numbers. And I'm not going to speak anymore on that, because some people can find that very offensive, if they're treated differently and spoken of in a different way. Secondly, with respect to multi-development, and I know this was raised and was mentioned at your last meeting, we have built, and probably would build here, multifamily developments. We built one in Westwood, for example. Currently, it's cost about $100 million, it's assessed for about $100 million. Just because people rent don't mean that they don't care about their property and how they live there. That has not been our experience. My family rented for years, for years, I'm from Brockton, I was not that uncommon, and people really cared about their families and how their property looked, and so I don't, I don't think that's a real issue, especially today, when to build an average residential apartment home for someone costs about a quarter of a million dollars just for the unit itself. Give you a sense of the investment that's there. Parking, parking is something that we're continually looking at. There's certainly a movement to reduce the number of parking spaces. And I, I think, Mr. Collins, you referenced, we did include shared parking and other opportunities. We have minimum parking that we have to be able to meet, that still is being evaluated currently today. I mean, obviously, single-family homes require this, townhomes require a higher percentage of multifamily homes, the statistics would tell you require about 1.25 per unit because you have one bedrooms and the like. We're very cognizant of that, the worst thing you want to do is have inadequate parking, both as to visitors and the like. So that will be all, as, as we have set this up, we will have to demonstrate to the SRA that each and every project we bring forward has adequate parking, how it functions, statistically how we can support it, so we do intend to do that. Traffic is primarily a creature of the state here, both because it has two phases, it is working through Mass stop with, as I mentioned, we evaluated 72 different intersections. It's in about a 500-page report that's there with a 1,000-page appendix that you have on file here in the town, with identified probably 30 intersections that need to be improved. That's everything from widening, new traffic lights, sometimes it's just signal timing, different things that we have to do that all have to be addressed, that's primarily addressed through the state process. That's one piece of it. The other piece of it is MBTA, and how you look at that, and, you know, how can that be improved, both from our parking. I'll give you an example, when we did our Alston project, which I mentioned earlier, which we're opening our first building next April, we ended up contributing to the MBTA line that goes along the Mass Pike and heads into, eventually into South Station, by actually creating and contributing dollars so that there would be additional double-layer decking for the T to increase ridership. We also paid to increase frequency. I imagine here that would probably be one of the issues that the team will do, that as you build out the development over time, they will look for us to contribute to that. And as I said, we did that, we were the third development in the state ever to do that, and that was on our Alston project. So I imagine traffic really to, this is the roadway that everybody, everybody's an expert in traffic because everybody drives, including myself, I absolutely get that, and then there'll also be the MBTA piece. So I think those were the four questions that were asked.
Mr. Town, I'd like to recognize Mr. Kevin Donovan-Sleipman, Kevin Donovan. Kevin, do you have any questions or comments or anything?
No, I'm good. I've seen this presentation quite, quite a bit, and.
I think the one thing, Kevin Donovan, 78 Adams Street, the one thing I think we have to all keep in mind is, that has been indicated by Mr. Tuig, is this project, and I go back with Joe Shea, back to 1996, when we first started looking at the redevelopment, once they closed the Naval Air Station, and then when it was 1998, when the legislation went into effect. In order, if we're going to be serious about this and recognize that it has to be, something has to be developed over there that will be beneficial to the communities, that's what originally the legislation, when the federal government closed the base, the BRAC Commission indicated that they would allow the land to be transferred under the provision that the, that it would be used for economic and purposes. So, I think, since 1998, the communities have got together and tried to, to do this, it hasn't come to fruition. I firmly believe if it doesn't go this time, it's not going to happen. So I think we have to take a real close look at it. I think in terms of what Mr. Tuig has indicated, in order from the, the market standpoint, we have to look at it to allow them to, whatever the market is going to dictate with, you know, with proper restrictions over it, if, if we're going to be able to achieve the, the final result here. So I would hope, and I would urge the planning board to look at this seriously. I personally am in favor of it. I've, as many of you know, I was on the Board of Directors of the Southfield Redevelopment Authority. Previous to that, I was the chief executive officer over there for about five and a half years, and I know the place backwards and forwards. From that standpoint, I, I believe it's an opportunity for the town of Abington, as well as Rockland and Waymouth, to be able to finally, finally get some benefit out of, out of what is there, and I would urge the planning board to take that into consideration. I will be making that argument to the Board of Selectmen, and I fully intend to, you know, go forward, and hopefully we can go to town meeting with a favorable recommendation. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Town. All right, any more questions from the public? Any more questions from the board? All right.
Do you want to close the hearing?
Yes. All right. I think it's time to close this hearing. Someone like to make a motion on the board to close the hearing, please?
Some moved?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, thank you.
Do they need to close this? Do you need to close yours?
Yeah, yes. Do you have that motion to close? Good, second?
Sorry.
Second, all the papers out, aye?
Aye.
Close, yes, aye. Who closed, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. We've heard all the presentations of proponents, Mr. Collins and Mr. Shepherd have asked really penetrating questions, and we've gotten some good questions from the public. What's the feeling of the board to either endorse or not endorse a recommendation?
For my part, I think we've asked some questions this evening, we've gotten some answers that by and large are, I think, good answers for my part. I'd like a little bit more time to try and absorb what we've heard tonight before making a final recommendation as a board member, but I'll defer to what the other board members want to do.
We have another board meeting before the special town meeting, correct?
Correct, yes, October 2nd.
I, you have a pretty heavy agenda on October 2nd already. If you want to meet another day, that's fine, but.
Yeah, we could meet another day.
You have, you have a lot on October 2nd.
Kind of used to three-hour meetings at this point.
I think you're going to have that.
I think we could be, we could have a special meeting to discuss this before our October 2nd meeting, if the board would go along with that.
Signed by me.
Yeah, I personally wouldn't have a problem with that.
Okay, Mr. Sober.
I don't have a problem with it, but I think we're probably just kicking the can down a little bit more.
Shea, what do we have for dates, potentially have another meeting?
Next Monday, 9:25. Following meeting, you have a meeting scheduled.
So we could meet next Monday? Does anyone have any conflict with that?
Which date, I'm sorry?
9:25?
You could meet this week.
We could meet this week, yeah.
I have 48 hours to post, but you could meet this week.
Yeah, I have Community Preservation Act tomorrow night, but other than that.
Let me go grab the book.
Liz, we meet on the 25th or so.
You guys are meeting next Monday night?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to suggest they go before you. You guys start at what, 6:00, 6:30?
6:00.
6:30.
So we need 48 hours of notice, we're talking, what, Thursday night?
Is that enough time to freedom mall?
Yeah. What's the date on Thursday?
September 21st.
21st, September 21st?
Today's 18th.
Today's 18th, right? 21. Break your calendar.
Yeah, it's the 21st.
I donate playlists to the American Red Cross. I'll be donating on that date, but I'll, sure, I'll be hydrated enough to chair the meeting, but that's.
Now, they can continue with you on the hearings, but they just can't accept a more testimony?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, some of the information that we received back has been vague.
Yep.
So we don't need too much time, but a little bit more time just to try and read through some of the information that's showing up very recently.
And you can meet during the day?
No.
No, you're working.
Well, let's go with 6 o'clock on Thursday, the 21st.
That's, that's enough time for.
Liz said 48 hours.
No, I mean, enough time for Rick to.
Yes, sir. Yep, I don't need much time.
What time?
6:00 PM, 21st.
Can do it earlier.
Yeah, about 5:30.
6 is good.
6 good with everyone?
Yep.
All right. Next, September 21st, 6:00 PM. All right, do we need a motion on this last one?
Yeah.
Okay. Does someone like to make a motion to have a meeting on this topic on Thursday, September 21st at 6:00 PM?
Some moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Well, we'll meet to have our discussion on the September 21st at 6:00 PM.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just so you know, the SRA's clause is, we take no action as far as the redevelopment, we've already, we've already recommended the three towns. We set out a public hearing, so there will be no action by us, I'm sure. Representatives will be here, but the authority will not be necessarily taken as a physical board.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. This has been great. And of course, I'd like to thank Ms. Shay for giving us lots of materials to read prior to the meeting, and also for people from Southfield for presenting at our other meeting there. And I think, hopefully, people watching this will get some good information for a town meeting on Saturday on the, what's it on, Tommy, what's it?
10:14, 9:00 AM.
10:14 at 9:00 AM. It's a long week, Mr. Smith won't be selling hamburgers at 9:00 AM, but.
Maybe donuts.
Public meetings are already enclosed, which is going to be.
Right. No, you can't take any testimony, it's just you.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn?
Yes. Second, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.